Conditioners, commissioners, conditioners. Either way, we're the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners. We'll be conducting a public hearing to consider the following items. There's five of them here that will sit in this public hearing. And I will read those. An ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately one acre of property located at eighty-seven ninety Saundersville Road, map thirty-two H group A parcel nine, and located within the city's urban growth boundary, along with a resolution to adopt the plan of services. The second item is an ordinance to amend the land use plan for the property known as Mirabella subdivision located on Lebanon Road, map fifty-five parcel seventy point zero two and seventy point zero three from low density residential to neighborhood commercial. The third item is an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately six point six acres, property located at three forty John Wright Road, map seventy-six parcel fifty-four and located within the city's urban growth boundary, along with a resolution to adopt the plan of services. The fourth item is an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately a half an acre of property known as the Hayes property located at ninety-three eighty-five Lebanon Road, map fifty-four D group B parcel one and located within the city's urban growth boundary, along with a resolution to adopt the plan of services. And the fifth and final item is an ordinance to amend the land use plan for the property known as Paddock's Senior Weller Life Communities located at five three five Pleasant Grove Road, map seventy-seven parcel seventy-one point two one and seventy-two point two five from interstate commercial to multifamily residential. So the public is invited to attend. What we will do is we have these five items here for the public hearing. I will open up the floor. You'll be given three minutes to address the board of commissioners on any of these five items, if you would like to. We will promptly adjourn the public hearing at six thirty if we're still going. And then we will reconvene at six thirty for our board of commissioners meeting. So if you'd like to address the board, I'd invite you forward to the podium and ask for your name and address for the record, please.
Hi there.
Hello.
My name is Kevin Sturgill. I'm with M two group. Our address is eighteen eighty-one General George Patton in Franklin. This is Matt Bryant, who's also with us. We're the Civil Engineer Survey and Land Development Consulting Firm representing the owners of Mirabella. And we wanted to thank the board for your time and consideration in reviewing this land use amendment, annexation, rezoning, and PMDP. We believe that you'll find that this exclusive, private gated community will prove to be a benefit to the city of Mount Juliet, not only based on expected property values, but through increased retail, restaurant, grocery, and general service revenues brought by its residents. We included a walking path and sidewalk exhibit as addition to the submission and as well to help illustrate the extensive trail and walking network in this highly amenitized community. The developers not only providing requested commercial and retail at the Route seventy interest, but is also planning on spending an estimated four point three million dollars in offsite public improvements, including sewer expansion, road widening, and traffic signalization. We're here for any questions you may have while you're considering this submission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. Cindy Sharp, nine oh two Lexi Court, Mount Juliet. I'm here to oppose thirteen H I N J on tonight's agenda pertaining to the Mirabella subdivision. I am hopeful that you will uphold the Planning Commission's negative recommendation pertaining to thirteen I and J. The issues of the Planning Commission mentioned emergency fire and response times, difficulty obtaining the sewer, and other safety issues. As far as thirteen H in the land use plan to change the low density residential to the neighborhood commercials suggesting the possibility of commercial businesses like retail stores and restaurants is simply crazy. This would be only benefiting Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Allen and the property owners, developers, yet again, putting aside the concerns of the Wilson County residents. While I do not live inside the city limits, should you choose to let this project move forward, your decision will adversely affect myself and the rest of the Wilson County families that live in this area. We understand that property owners can do pretty much whatever they want with their property. However, this is not about that. This is about the safety and well-being of Wilson County residents and those that visit and work within our community. Currently, the developers are to install a light at the intersection and a couple turn lanes down the road. Not sure that's enough. I'm pretty sure we all know that's not enough. The current project installing turn lanes at West Elementary is a short-term fix to a long-term problem. And lastly, the safety issues alone should cause great concern for all of you. Calling nine one one, emergency vehicles. Will they be able to get through? Standstill traffic. We all know that we've all driven down the road. We've all been there. By law, vehicles are required to move over. However, we have no way of doing that. There is this much of a berm on each side of the road. And that alone should cause more concern. And there is no question that at some point, someone's life is going to be put at risk. Whether that person is waiting for emergency vehicles to arrive to help a loved one or someone thinking they're just driving to school today, dropping their kids off, and they don't make it. I just have one question for all of you. Whose life are you willing to sacrifice for another subdivision? Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
My name is Krista Dancy Kabiel, six zero two Cooks Hill Road.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am here from the Poplar Point neighborhood. If you're in Poplar Point, will you please raise your hand? Thank you. I'm here because I care deeply about the future of our community and our neighbors, and I'm concerned about the proposed Mirabella development on Lebanon Road. I want to be clear, I'm not against growth. Growth is good when it's done right. Like most folks here, I want Mount Juliet and Wilson County to thrive, but growth has to be responsible and with an eye on the bigger picture, not just one project at a time. Let me introduce you to our neighborhood where there's a three and a half mile stretch on Lebanon Road that's considered unincorporated, though my address says Mount Juliet. And it's near one oh nine. It is still the same narrow, shoulderless, two-lane road it has always been, even though parts on both sides are widened as wide as fifty-five miles an hour and five lanes of traffic. We are the choke point right now. With a fifty-five mile per hour speed limit and no shoulder, it can take thirty minutes to drive five miles at rush hour. Accidents shut the road down for hours going both directions. Emergency vehicles struggle to get through and provide aid. Blind hills, steep edges make it more dangerous. And now, I learn Five Oaks Development is on the way. On top of that, West Elementary is already bursting at the seams. Two years ago, we had a meeting at Cook's Church with T dot, the county, school reps, and the community, and everyone agreed we had a real problem outside West Elementary. But since then, we have just added more traffic, more families, and more pressure. I want to say this loud and clear. The teachers at West Elementary are heroes, but heroes shouldn't have to carry the burden they are. We are maxed capacity. Portable classrooms have not solved the real problem because hallways, cafeterias, gymnasium, playground, buses, and after-school programs are all over capacity already, and that's who would be zoned for this community. We moved here for West Elementary. That's why I moved to Poplar Point. My son spent a year crammed in a windowless classroom with truncated abbreviated recess, not seeing the sky, with the bus system that required him to wait outside at six fifteen in the dark. We pulled him out after a year. That's what's happening for people who live there. I have no doubt that the community being built will be beautiful, but we need to think about our neighbors. And right now, the neighbors are suffering, the kids are suffering, our quality of life is suffering, and ultimately, all of our property value will suffer. So I urge you to please consider the long-term, larger impacts of these sorts of developments and make sure that infrastructure proceeds further development. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. My name's Randy Norris. I live at eight oh eight Lexi Lane in Mount Juliet. And I just want to take you on a little journey. Just fifteen minutes ago, I pulled out of our neighborhood from Popper Point and got stopped before West Elementary School. So traffic was backed up from this point down to Bender's Ferry Road. This was just forty-five minutes ago. This is not even considered the times. Kids get out of school or go into school in that condition. Likewise, from Bender's Ferry, it was backed up all the way to the Water Company. I know you guys have traveled these roads, so you understand exactly what I just told you. I'm all for new neighborhoods, and I'm all for development. There's no doubt about it. But the traffic that we continue to fight over there is endless. There's nothing being done about that. And the schools are overcrowded, which is another situation down the road. However, we do believe there is infrastructure, four lanes, and a turn lane need to be in place first. There's no doubt about it. I think the neighborhood would be a great neighborhood. We just need the correct infrastructure to make sure people are safe. I have a personal thing that happened to my daughter four years ago. She stopped to turn into our neighborhood like you're going on seventy west, to turn to left in our neighborhood in Popper Point, got rear-ended, got knocked into the other side of traffic, got hit head-on, and turned around two hundred and eighty, two hundred and seventy degrees. That's your daughter. That's how dangerous it is out there. And you guys are very well aware, and you know there is danger on that road today. And there's a lot of wrecks on that road today. Bad wrecks, not just small wrecks, big wrecks. Like she said, there is quite a bit. If you turn into the school, we're across the, you have to cross the yellow line in the other lane so cars can get by us so kids can get to school in the morning. So even though the small addition they're going to make on each side of West Elementary, you're not fixing it all the way back to Poplar Point. It's ignored. So those people are still going to be in the bicycle lane, halfway in the lane, and other people trying to get by them that don't even go to the school. I've almost been hit head-on twice with occasions I can't get in my lane because of traffic going down the side of Highway seventy. Let's say it's four P M. and you want to turn left to get out of your neighborhood. You can hang it up. What you have to do is turn right, go down to Beckwith, come around the back through Green Hill subdivision to go the other direction. That's how bad it's got. So please, take this under consideration and understand. I think it's awesome, the things we want to do in this county. We've lived here for thirty-three years. But let's just do the right thing before we move forward. Give us a consideration we need to live a safe and happy life continuing at Mount Juliet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have time for one more.
Hey, good evening. My name is Ben Thompson. My address is thirty-five thirty Torrington Way, Charlotte, North Carolina. I'm here to represent the Paddock's Senior Living Site. I'm one of the owners or prospective owners. Second-generation family business, we're out of Charlotte, traditional senior housing developer. This project is unique from many developments in that we intend to start a small business here. We're not a merchant developer. We don't build a community, sell it, and walk away. We only build for ourselves. Currently operate in six states, have about thirty-six hundred residents that, physical residents, and many more members that live with us. I have here with me Brenda Shackelford from C S D G. He's a member of our engineering and design team. We're prepared to answer any technical questions you all have. I can obviously address any questions about the company, the product, that sort of thing. We're prepared to do that now or presumably later, once it's on the agenda. So thank you for having us.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we will close the public hearing. We will reconvene at six thirty for our regularly scheduled meeting. Here we go. Good evening, everyone. Today is April twenty-eighth, so I'll call the meeting of the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners to order. We do have a quorum today pursuant to city code six twenty-two ten. So we'll proceed. We're conducting the business of the city of Mount Juliet. So I'll start off by saying, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the meeting of the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners tonight. My name is Mayor James Manus. And on behalf of the commission and staff, I want to welcome you to tonight, welcome here tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennesseean the right to attend the city commission meetings and observe how the government is doing the business. We appreciate each of you taking time out from your busy schedules to be here tonight to see how the government works. So our first thing on our agenda, and there's copies of the agendas in the wire baskets there, if you would like to follow along, is the setting of the agenda. We have a four hundred and ninety-two page packet to go through tonight. We have nine items on unfinished business and twenty items under new business. I would like to propose that items ten A, B, C, eleven A, B, C, twelve A, B, C all be moved to consent. It's basically everything under unfinished business, the three annexations. Saundersville. Any objections on those? All right. We'll move the first, we'll move the unfinished business portion of the agenda to the consent. I'd also like to propose item number thirteen G, which is an ordinance for the police vehicle. There's been one change to that. It's not going to be any new spending, so thirteen G. Thirteen L, which is a requirement by state law. Thirteen M, which is the fireworks resolution. Thirteen N. Thirteen P. Thirteen Q. R and S be moved to consent. So we've got an objection to thirteen M. Okay. Any objections to G, L, M, P, Q, R, and S? And somebody's going to say T, U, V. All right. Sorry. Yes. All right. So with that objection, we will move thirteen G, L, N, P, Q, R, and S to consent. We'll read the consent first under new business, and then we'll proceed to take the rest of the items as they fall. All right. Our next item on the agenda is invocation and pledge of allegiance. I want to ask our city manager, sir, if you would lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Yes, sir. If everybody's joining me, please bow your head. Dear heavenly fathers we gather for this meeting, we seek your wisdom and guidance, illuminate our minds so we may make decisions that align with your will. Help us to communicate effectively, respect different opinions, and remain united in our purpose. Let your Holy Spirit lead our discussions and grant us clarity in every matter. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have two sets, one from March twenty-fourth and one from April fourteenth. Is there any objections to considering them together? All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes pass. All right, the next portion of our agenda is going to be citizen comments. So I just say, in order to conduct an effective business, like, we've got some rules here that we adopt. We just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, that you give your name and address to the record, that you address any questions you may have through myself. Please keep your comments civil as possible. And if we have any questions, I may direct a member of staff to address that, but no one from the tables under any obligations to respond. Just please avoid any inappropriate language profanity or other inappropriate conduct. I will say, unlike the Planning Commission, this is the only opportunity to address the board. So with that, I'm going to open up the floor, and I'd invite you to come forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hello. My name is Tom Needham. I live at one two four two five Lebanon Road in Mount Juliet. I've lived in this town for thirty-eight years. I've raised my children and my grandchildren, shot a whole bunch of fireworks shows. And lately, there's a lot of misinformation going around about this fireworks business people are asking me. So today, I sent everybody in this room an email that had four things in it that I'd like everybody to address, and that had a question in it. So until the newspaper comes and interviews Kenny and interviews Rocky and puts the newspaper article, I won't make any more comments about it because it's real detailed about what's happening. I just want everybody to know the truth. There's two sides to every story. My side, his side, and the truth. The truth will set you free. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Howdy, everybody.
Hello.
My name is, oh, I have to move this. Can everybody hear me? My name's Jessica Needham Scales. I live at one two four two five Lebanon Road here in Mount Juliet. And I'm here to invite the whole town to a special event this Memorial Day. Monday, May twenty-sixth, Needham's Nursery will be hosting our second annual Free Drone Show to honor our veterans and their incredible sacrifices. This show, much like last year's show, will be a breathtaking display of lights, art, and technology, creating a unique experience for the entire community. It's our way of saying thank you to those who have given so much to protect our freedom, and it's just such a joyful night that everyone adored last year, even the folks that aren't fireworks over fireworks like we are. So again, I just want to invite everyone to bring their family, friends, and neighbors and join us at a new location this year for an unforgettable night under the stars. Let's come together and show our veterans the appreciation they truly deserve. I'll make sure to post all the information regarding location and times on my socials and, of course, get all the necessary paperwork filed with the city very soon. But I hope to see everyone there.
Thank you.
Good night.
Is there anyone else to address the board of commissioners? All right, seeing none, we'll close citizen comments. We'll move to commissioner comments and report. Commissioner Giles, you were recognized for five minutes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So this coming Sunday is Ride Mount Juliet. If you look at the screen, you'll see it. And this is, I'm trying to think if we had it on here, how many this has been. We've done this, we do it annually. It's sponsored by the BPAC of Mount Juliet. And it's free to the participants. We ask you, it's a family fun event to come out and participate. For kids up to twelve years old, they can register to win a free bicycle. This bicycle comes from Biker's Choice down on Lebanon Road. It's very, very high quality. Them, in conjunction, Biker's Choice with the Velateers Bicycle Club, donate this bicycle to whoever wins it. And so it's free. And then, on the route, at a certain location, then we have it where the kids follow a fire truck. So it's just a, it's a great fun day. We've had success with this for the last several years. Many of the board has come out and participated and been there. And I know that Commissioner Malley will say something about it too as well, and it will be up for her too. So please come out and join us on Sunday. Again, it's free. Two P M. It's going to be over at Charlie Daniels Park is where we start, and that's where we will end up. So please come out. Also want to really, you know, we vote and we increase our emergency services up here, and we have probably the best that I know of in the area, period, in this part of the state, if not the state. And you hear of everyone else who uses that service, but when it hits home, you really see how efficient and how excellent they are. We had a little incident at my home last week, and I had to call emergency services, and they were there so quick. The police were there almost immediately, giving aid, the ones that are trained to do that. And I forget what it's called, first aid or whatever it is. And then, the E M T arrived, and so he started. The only thing is, is just, Mark, I wanted to tell you this. You know, my wife was almost going into shock. Seriously, I got the baby, and she was just basically going in shock. And she was hurting so bad, sitting there in that chair. This E M T guy comes in there to start his job, and she says, "You are so cute." I thought, she didn't say that about me, you know? I said, "I'm so jealous, I'm going to leave the room." Of course, I didn't because it was my wife. But y'all done an excellent job, everybody, all of our emergency service, the transport, everything. And I really appreciate you, and I wanted to thank y'all publicly. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Hopefully, we can get that voice with more time, but by as fair, you're recognized.
That's the way her voice sounded that day, you know? I'm holding, anyway, it was a ordeal.
I don't know how I'm going to follow that one, you know what I mean? No, listen, you know, all jokes aside, I'm, you know, like, I'm glad your wife got taken care of, and I, she's doing well now, right? Okay, that's great. Well, first of all, thanks for everybody coming out tonight and also online. These last couple of weeks have been very busy for myself and also our city. I think I've reached out to many of you guys, trying to get things situated when it comes down to different departments. So I'm going to do a little bit of thanking tonight because what's great about this role up here, we get many folks that reach out to us on a daily basis. Sometimes I may not hear from my neighbors until it becomes an issue for them, right? It's one of those things of, you know, you know, like, when it comes down to our neighbors, it's like, you know, they, you know, they know that we're here, but they call us when they need us, so it's great. So with that, these last couple of weeks, first of all, I'm just going to piggyback off the first responders as I was pulling in the neighborhood last night. Again, they were pulling out of my neighborhood. I've got about six hundred and fifty-three homes in my community, and then I'm neighboring up to seven hundred. I think it's fifty-six. So we've got two large communities. So I kind of feel for some of the residents that came out here tonight. Thank you all for voicing your concerns. That's over fourteen hundred and fifty homes that I live in within a very large radius. And I will just go ahead and reiterate, we have the best first responders within our city, and traffic is always a concern of ours. This commission continues to talk about Lebanon Road as well as Providence area with all the different areas up there that just, again, we're trying to work with our state to get those addressed as soon as possible. So we are hearing it. You know, like, when we sit down with these developers and we sit down with our schools officials, that's the first thing that I ask for, which is, have you talked to our school boards? Where are we at with our schools? Where are we at with the occupancy for our students? Because my kids also go to these schools, and I can tell you right now, you know, hearing some of the past issues where students are sitting three to four, sometimes four to five kids in a seat, that's unacceptable. And I definitely voiced my concerns with the school board as well as the school officials. So to the folks that continue to reach out to me, thank you, as well as our first responders for their police, fire, and EMS. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for all that you guys do and our dispatch. It's not an easy job, but we greatly appreciate everything that you guys do for us as a community, as well as making our jobs a little bit easier for as fast as you guys do respond. Public works, you know, for all of them, storm, sewer, water, all of it. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, because there's been a lot of times that I've been reaching out to our city manager to help out and work with our developers that are unfortunately, may not be as quick on responding to cleaning up their mess or at least responding off of some of this water runoff. To get on a positive note, though, you know, our parks, Rocky and his team, just want to kind of highlight some things. Splash pad, as the temperatures are coming up, you know, today was very warm out there. So Splash pad opens up for the kids May twenty-seventh, so that's right around a corner. So our parks are starting to bloom, is what I like to say. So there's a lot of things going on every weekend, from the yard sales to the Friday night movie nights. So please. So please look at the website for the city of Mount Juliet, look at parks, look at all the different events, get out there to meet your neighbors and have fun with the kids. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll recognize Commissioner Hefner for his report. You're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everybody coming out this evening, those watching on TV and online. Also want to congratulate all the winners, the nominees, the finalists for the Main Street Award. Those were given out the other day. So congrats to everybody that was involved in that. I want to thank all the voters that came out and supported me in that, in that awards as well. So I appreciate all my supporters there and congrats to all those that were finalists, nominee, nominees and winners. I want to talk about roads and infrastructure. I hear this, unfortunately, I get sucked into hit Mount Juliet way too often, more so than I like. But one thing that everyone should be aware of, and I know some of you are, when you see the cones going out on the streets, when we're actually moving dirt around, that's the tip of the iceberg. What you don't see is all the work and effort and sometimes years that go into getting to the point where you're seeing those cones out on the road. So when I, when I read comments like, oh, you know, city's not doing anything about roads. Yeah, there's, there's plenty of roads where there's work being done. You're just not seeing it, just not seeing it. But there's right away acquisitions that's taking place. There's funding that's, that's, that's happening in the background, engineering. So there's, there's just, what you're seeing is that the last, the last leg of that mile, when you're seeing those cones going out. So don't think that we're not doing anything. We are, public works is, is hard, constantly hard at work in making those programs. You can actually track our capital roadway projects online. So if you ever got a question and where we're at on a particular road, go, go to the Mount Juliet website and click on it. You'll see exactly where we're at. So there's work being done, you just can't see it yet. Also, Commissioner Giles mentioned a personal experience. I had a personal experience, I'll tell the story real quick. I was a passive, I guess passive investor in a project here in Mount Juliet. And it's actually unfortunate, back in September, I was faced in a, with a situation where I had to take over, take over the project. And it's not so much about that, but I was day to day involved in this project. And I, I got to work with all of our staff, most of our staff. And so I was, I was on, I was on the other side of that table. And working with, you know, working as, you know, someone in the community that's having to interact with their staff. And our staff was absolutely phenomenal. And I told them, I said, "Look, you, you treat me like, like you do anybody else, unless you're treating everybody else like, you know what, then don't do that." But no, they, all kidding aside, it was just, they're, they were great. They're great to work with and I, I hope and pray that, that you, you know, you interact with others that are in my same situation. So I just want to say thanks to, you know who you are. I won't mention last names, but Tim, I see you in the front row and, and Matt and Shane, Ray. I know he's, he's, I don't know if he's watching or not, but there's just been just a great experience in working with our staff and the situation I was put in. So one last thing I want to say, PSA, it's getting warm out. Be careful when you're putting your dogs and cats and your animals in your car. Don't lock them in your, in the cars with the windows up. So please be aware that the heat is rising. It's getting, I think we got up to 90 degrees today. So just be aware of that. Don't leave your pets in your cars in these hot days. So with that, I can conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll recognize Commissioner Malley for five minutes.
Thank you. Can you, can, there you are. All right. So again, as Commissioner Giles mentioned, this Sunday is our BPAC's Ride Mount Juliet and it's our biggest event that we have. And also prior to, if you get there a few minutes early, the police always hold the rodeo, which is, you know, they teach. It's like a little rodeo and they have it marked off with cones and everything and it's real fun. So just bring your kids prior to the event and for that. And let's see, was it anything else? Just, so just bring the kids, it's a free family event. And so we'll meet at the back of the park where the Cedar Creek Greenway starts and, which is beyond the football field in the back. And we'll take the Cedar Creek Greenway and around to where it comes out on Golden Bear and that's where the fire truck will meet us and lead us around down to Woodridge Place and down and then back through the school and then back through the, back to the park. So it's, it's a fun event, so make plans to come out. And so, hey, all right. So another shout out for EMS. Friday, my mother went to Vanderbilt Walk-in Clinic next to Hobby Lobby and she was getting blood work done. She had, did everything, so she turned around to leave. She was almost to the door, she tripped over her feet and did a face plant on the floor. And so they called the ambulance and everything and they were there. And we thought she broke her nose, thankfully she didn't. And she busted her mouth, had to have stitches. But just a shout out to our EMS department because they were there, they were spot on and took her to the, took her to the ER. Monthly newsletter, I always target the first of the month. I am behind, so it might be Friday before I can get it out, but Thursday or Friday. I'm going to try for Friday. And let's see, thank you, I was a finalist in, that Commissioner Hefner mentioned. I was one of the finalists for the elected official. So thank you, everyone, for your vote. Congrats to Commissioner Hefner because he won. And I think that's all I had.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hefner.
Sorry, my wife is going to kill me if I don't say this. She won for best musician singer, Mount Juliet. So congratulations to my wife for, sorry, Tracy, she, she won that one. But I want to, I want to say congratulations to my wife for winning best musician band in Mount Juliet.
Awesome. Mr. Martin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. It's always good to see familiar faces and friends, everybody in our community's family. Like we said, the people we serve is what makes Mount Juliet, Mount Juliet. If not for the human beings, it would just be a place on the map. It'd just be a landmass. Thank you to staff for what they do every day. For somebody that's served the city for over 35 years, I know first and foremost that what we hire, skill sets are great, but being good human beings are great human beings. So I appreciate the commission for giving us the tools that we need. I appreciate them for always having our backs and supporting us and the citizens. We're very, we love our community and we're very proud of it. Want to give a shout out to a businessman in particular, Mr. Ray Daniel. If you're familiar with him, not to give the business a shout out, to sing any particular business out, but he's going to be retiring. And he is the longest tenured business in Providence, in the Providence marketplace. He was one of the first ones to build there, if you remember, as far as out parcels. He's the owner there. He's been hiring our sons and daughters for many years to work that place. And he's been so inspirational to the young men and women that have worked for him. And he's retiring, much deserved retirement. He called me last week to let me know that. So if you get a chance and you go by there and you're patronizing his business, I doubt very seriously whoever will be able to fill his shoes. But the way that it works is he doesn't own the store, he owns the franchise. So the building will go to a new owner. And I can only hope that they're half as good as what Mr. Ray Daniel's been for, known to this, for the city, for special events, for tornadoes. When we had the big SNS fire years ago, he brought all the free food and things out. I think he's been really heavily involved with BPAC and just different things through police and fire. Really appreciate him. So that was on my heart to give him a shout out. Always shop local because the money goes back into your community, goes into the schools, it goes into the roads and the infrastructure. Shout out to the commission for what they've done over the years to run the city on such a low property tax. I, I know that because when I came here, I was a sixth police officer, which leads me into my next comment, which is a tough one. Anybody that's been in Mount Juliet very long at all, if you've been here, if you don't know, the chief that I come to work here for is a patrolman, is the sixth police officer for the city. There was only a handful of people here then, that was 35 plus years ago. One of them was Ms. Sheila that's still sitting there. She's the longest tenured employee, she's in her 36 year, going on 37. We had a bad loss this weekend and we knew it was coming, he was in hospice. But Chief Charles McCrory, if any of you knew him, he retired in 2002 after 26 years serving the city of Mount Juliet as his police chief. Before that, it was Buell Agee, which was basically like a constable or a volunteer for the city. And I went and got to see him last week and I'm glad I got to do that because I loved him dearly. And I want to thank him personally and Danny Farmer for giving me the opportunity to come work at the city. Those are two men in particular, like the people we see up here before you, that nothing happens without them. And he sort of set the tone for our city. And I want to give a shout out in particular to his beautiful wife. I attended their wedding 20 some odd years ago. And for a lady to stand in the trenches with her husband as he fights Alzheimer's like he has in the condition, when I got to see her what last week and what she was doing, I told her, I said, "Well done." Because unless you've lived in that life and lived in that world to realize what somebody's dealing with. So I want to give everybody a heartfelt reminder is you never know what another human being's dealing with. So I know it sounds hokey and it sounds cheesy, but always be kind because I think most people, now if they're being mean to you and ugly, then it's a little hard to do that sometimes. But always try to be patient and understand what other human beings are dealing with. And even though they might not be telling what you want to hear, but deep down inside, there's a reason for that. So Ms. Sherry, shout out to you, you're in our thoughts and prayers in this city. I've talked to all the commissioners. We're going to make you proud with what the police department and, and others are going to do. And I love you, chief, appreciate you. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll start with our unfinished, unfinished business consent. 10A, a resolution adopting the plan of services for the property located at 340 John Wright Road, map 76 parcel 54 in Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary. 10B, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 6.6 acres located at 340 John Wright Road, map 76 parcel 54 and located within the city's urban growth boundary. 10C, a resolution and memorandum of ordinance related relative to the annexation of 340 John Wright Road. 11A, a resolution adopting the plan of services for the property located at 9385 Lebanon Road, map 54D, group B parcel one in the Wilson, Wilson County, in Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary. 11B is an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately a half an acre of property located at 9385 Lebanon Road, map 54D, group B parcel one and located within the city's urban growth boundary. 11C, a resolution and memorandum of ordinance relative to the annexation of the property located at 9385 Lebanon Road. 12A, a resolution adopting a plan of services for the property known as 8790 Saundersville Road, property located at 8790 Saundersville Road, map 32H parcel nine in Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary. 12B, which is an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately one acre of property located at 90, at 8790 Saundersville Road, map 32H, group A parcel nine and located within the city's urban growth boundary. 12C is a resolution in memorandum of ordinance relative to the annexation of 8790 Saundersville Road. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Those nine items pass. The next item is the consent for new business, which I will start. At 13G, which is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2425 budget ordinance, 2425 to appropriate funds for the purchase of vehicles for the police department. 13L is a resolution authorizing the, the actual study of the cost associated with hazardous duty supplemental benefits. 13N, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Mount Juliet and AT&amp;T for E911 hardware and maintenance service for the police department. 13P, which is a resolution declaring May as Bike Month in the city of Mount Juliet. And 13Q is a resolution adopting the Mount Juliet Tennessee Safety Action Plan that was completed in accordance with the Federal Highway Administration Safe Streets for All Program. 13R, which is a resolution approving the acceptance of real property located, opportunity relative to Lynnwood Station, planned unit development, off-site road improvements. And 13S, which is a resolution requesting the municipal technical advisory service to provide a completed code service for the city of Mount Juliet, Tennessee Code of Ordinances. Is there a motion? Second. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Those, those eight items do pass. Excuse me, seven items. So 16 down, 13 to go. All right, 13A, an ordinance to amend the city of Mount Juliet Code of Ordinances, chapter 12, Fire Prevention and Protective Emergency Services, Fireworks, Article 1, 5 and 6. Have a motion? Any questions or comments? Commissioner Giles, you're recognized.
I had talked to the fire chief and he's, he's going to read this as an amendment that I would like to, to offer him, or he offered him.
You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Yes, after discussing with Commissioner Giles today, we kind of wanted to clarify a few things within, within this ordinance. So under section one, Article one, the first paragraph that's there, all clubhouses, common buildings that contain meeting, gathering space or kitchen areas, wanted to put in parentheses there with major cooking appliances, colon, stove, oven, et cetera, within that closed parentheses. That's the only amendment to that paragraph would be to just identify what the kitchen constitutes because that question comes up quite often.
It was comma stove, oven?
Yes. Stove, comma oven, comma, et cetera. Anything, and what we're looking at there is basically anything that produces grease laden vapors or produces those type of vapors that could be flammable.
Okay.
And could we put that in that too, when we, when we write that, when we add this? I would like that, the grease and the vapors and what you said, I think that's important.
And then section two, under section two, that Article one, section 12 dash two, that paragraph, monitored fire alarms required in new commercial construction and when existing commercial structures are renovated, put a parentheses there, right after renovated, say requiring permits. Because there's a question about what constitutes renovation. Any renovation that would constitute a permit, a permit being required to be pulled for that renovation would be what would be constituted there. And then in section three, Article one, section 12 dash three, the very first of that sentence instead of, from that paragraph, which is currently states all commercial structures located inside city of Mount Juliet would read new and renovated in parentheses, requiring permits. Structures located inside the city of Mount Juliet should be required to maintain a three-foot buffer of non-combustible materials. And that, that way all the commercial businesses that are currently in existence are grandfathered in. We'll note that we are going to ask those businesses, especially if they have materials other than brick or stone on the outside of the business, if they have mulch up against the business, we will, as we're doing life safety inspections, notify them of that risk and what we have had in the past. Because we have had five fires caused by cigarettes and mulch up against the business, two of them in one business itself. And then the hotel that we had also involved in that fire was created by mulch. And so I think this is fair to all the existing business owners. We're going to kind of ask them to abide by that provision if they would, if they've got flammable type materials up against that mulch area. But that would be their choice if they're an existing business. This would be all new and renovated businesses.
Right. And just to, just a quick check here, you say in Article one, excuse me, section one, Article one, you're adding major cook, cooking appliances, stove, oven, et cetera. Section two, Article one, 12, two, you're adding requiring permits. And then section three, Article one, 12, three, new and renovated, requiring permits. Correct? All right. Is that your motion?
Yes, with, with him explaining about the, the grease and, and the vapors and stuff, yes.
All right, got a second? Questions or comments on the amendment? Commissioner Malley?
Would you, for the public's education, would you, this state what our code says about residential burning, like open burning inside the city and also bonfires?
Yes. The code currently states, and we changed that previously, we've kind of amended some of this to, to update a couple of those things. You're allowed to burn material or rubbish on your property that is not contained within a commercial manufactured fire commercial manufactured fire pit or otherwise. So it can be open brush, which was what we call an open burn. No more than thirty six square feet, which would be average like six by six area, no more than four feet tall. And so that's actually in our in the in that section previously, and it's it's what we want to leave in there as far as approved goes. That doesn't permit or that doesn't forbid anybody from burning in a commercially manufactured fire pit, constructed fire pit or otherwise fireplace or otherwise. We do not want to allow bonfires. Bonfires are typically where you're stacking logs on top of each other for the purpose of having an outside gathering or an event within the city because it would exceed that six by six and four foot tall requirement. And so a bonfire, you if you want to call it a bonfire, it would be allowed as long as it's not greater than the thirty six square foot requirement. That's no more than four foot tall.
All right, any questions, any additional questions, comments on the amendment? All in the all in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Back on the ordinance is once amended, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the ordinance on first reading as once amended, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Thirteen A does pass first reading. Next item is thirteen B, which is an ordinance to amend the city of of Mount Juliet Codes of Ordinances, Chapter thirty Utilities, Divisions one through twelve. Is there a motion? And a second, questions or comments on twelve B? Commissioner Heffner, you're recognized.
Question for City Attorney. I notice we sorry, I noticed we have fees, separate fees for in city versus out of the city, but in our UGB. I asked the question, and is there any concern with charging higher fees for people that do not live in the city versus in the city?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't believe so. I mean, if you'd like me to look into it further, I can. I know this was previously passed by ordinance. So I would assume that it was checked at that time, but I haven't personally looked into it.
I bring that up because we had some issues with some permits with food trucks. And we charged a fee for food trucks that were licensed in Mount Juliet versus those that were not and there's a lawsuit pending. I know we resolved it, but I just want to make sure there's no issues with that.
I don't, I know our Director of Utilities wouldn't be able to answer the legal question, but he might be able to add some perspective to it as to why that happened at that time, or maybe Shane, I don't know.
Yes, sir. The what? I was not at the city at the time. The out of city sewer rates were increased or set, but they've not changed since twenty nineteen. But there's still a couple of members on the board here at that time. But this ordinance rewrite has no impact on current rates for our users at all. So that is not changing.
Do you want to take some time and research it between now and sec to second reading?
I can absolutely do that.
Assuming it passes today. Yeah, good. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of twelve B, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Did I say twelve? What did I say? I did say twelve. Thirteen B, all in favor of thirteen B, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? We don't want to pass something twice. Thirteen C, an ordinance to amend the city of Mount Juliet Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty eight Traffic Traffic and Vehicles Article two Traffic Commission Sections, Section twenty eight twenty four. Have a motion? Have a second. Commissioner Heffner?
I don't know if this is the appropriate place to do this, but I know when I served on the planning commission, there it the the speed calming devices that we're putting out, and I know I talked to Shane about this a couple of times. And I think there's there's an opportunity for us to take a look at the ITE standards and adopt standards when standards when it comes to the construction of speed calming devices, the location of of where we put these speed calming. For for example, you don't want to put them on a slope. You don't want to put them, you know, too steep of a slope. So I I don't know how it's done today, but I think it would be a good practice if we took a if we staff takes a look at those standards to see if that's something that we can adopt going forward. Just as a suggestion, again, I don't know that it's it's appropriate here. I mean, I'm in favor of this, but I'm also in favor of looking at some standards. In particular, ITE, and I know Chairman Luke Winchester supports that as well. So again, I don't know if it's if it's any any action to take here, but if you could look at that, that would be.
Yeah, and I'd say generally, you know, those standards are considered best practice anyway. So when Matt's looking at the locations for vertical deflection devices, you know, speed hums, raised crosswalks and whatnot. We look at those standards and we look at federal highway.
I know, but we've got speed coming devices.
They're different sizes and different shapes and different styles and located in places that I I wouldn't normally think a speed calming device should be. Look at Tate Lane. I mean, you're coming off of that that steep climb which crosses those railroad tracks and I don't, I don't know that that's appropriate location, but I'm not an engineer. But I just want us to follow some specific guidelines and I think the MTE, the ITE standards covers that. But if you want to take that back to the planning commission and get them to weigh in on it, I'll sponsor, what do I need to sponsor on the planning commission to have them review it?
I'd second that. Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, when coming off a hill, brakes won't work if your tires aren't on the ground.
Right. So again, I don't know if there's any actionable item here tonight, but I'll I'll reach out to you and we can get something on the traffic commission agenda. Take a look at that. All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Giles?
That I'd like to offer, but I also want to to comment on what you said over there in Tate Lane. If I'm not mistaken, that traffic controlling initiative there is because there's a crosswalk there of that of that greenway. Is that not correct? Because I know when I go like today, when I went to Rotary, I I always try to stop even before I go because I'm I'm cognitiv who's coming, who we're we're the people. So I think that's what it is to make people slow down right there because it's a greenway. So anyway, okay, so I want to make an amendment. This would be a new number elf on here. And it would read like this, existing speed control devices on roads that are resurfaced shall be replaced by city staff with when, in other words, when necessary, whether deterioration or repaving with comparable speed control devices without the traffic commission's consideration or approval. And then after after the speed control devices, I will insert it that produce the same or greater results. That's number, that would be an F. And then to add to B one, if the eighty five, eighty fifth percentile speed is less than eight miles per hour over the posted speed limit, the Public Works Director may allow a request for special control devices to go forward to the traffic commission for consideration, only if there is inadequate intersection site distance or stopping site distance that poses a safety issue. An intersection site distance or stopping site distance analysis must be performed to document that the available site distance is less than the required site distance by A A S H T O standards.
Commissioner, you have that in writing?
I do.
I would request that you either email or send it to the recorder and myself so we can read that for the record. Would it be, and I would, and while you're doing that, I'd make a motion that we table this to the heel of the agenda and pick it back up with that because I'm never going to get all that correct. I'm just not.
Okay.
I do good to read the stuff that's already written up here, which y'all have heard tonight.
Okay.
So any objections to tabling? Hearing none, we will, we will pick thirteen C back up at the heel of the agenda. Thirteen D, which is an ordinance to amend the city of Mount Juliet Code of Ordinances, Chapter four alcoholic beverages, Article one, three and four. Motion and a second. All right, any questions or comments on twelve, excuse me, did it again, thirteen D? All right, all in favor of thirteen D, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That does pass. Any objection to reading E and F together? Hearing none. Thirteen E, which is an ordinance to amend the land use plan for the property known as Paddock Senior Weller Life Communities located at five three five Pleasant Grove Road map seventy seven parcel seventy two point two one and seventy two point two five from interstate commercial to multifamily residential and thirteen F, which is an ordinance to rezone approximately thirty three point five two acres of property at five three five Pleasant Grove Road map seventy seven parcel seventy two point two one and seventy two point two five from RS forty to RM sixteen PUD and to adopt the preliminary master development plan for Paddock's Senior Weller Life Communities. Have a motion and a second. The two items are on the table. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Commissioner Heffner, you have the floor, sir.
So my my, there's been several projects that have that I've I've met with on this going back to twenty twenty when I was first elected to the board. I would say this is would be the least dense of those that I've seen. There was a concern about the easement, and I think that's been resolved. Is that correct?
That's correct. Essentially, the area impacted by
Excuse me, sir.
Okay. And I did, I did see that. So I want to note that I repositioned the residential portion of this is would be on the west side of the property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. The other concern I had, which I, your engineer, Joe Haddix, and you can speak to this too, was the drainage, the stormwater and how that could potentially affect the residents in Clearview that live on that Fairview Drive. It's been notorious for flooding. Seems like every time it rains, it's a hundred year flood. So I want to hear what measures that you've taken to to make sure that that flooding does, that this development doesn't continue, doesn't attribute to an already really bad situation. So can you explain what mitigation efforts you put in here for stormwater?
I need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Brenda Shackelford. I'm with CSGG at two three oh five Klein Avenue. We are, I believe the issues that you're talking about are northeast. And our discharge is going northwest, so it's not going to that Clearview area. And we'll abide by regulations which require like we detain predeveloped, postdeveloped for zero, you know, two through one hundred year. And and so we'll mitigate that through detention.
Okay. Yeah, so what you're saying is the water's flowing in the opposite direction? Okay. I see Shane's shaking his head too, so you can, okay. Very good. Also, too, there was there was a, when I was on the planning commission, when Andrew's Cadillac came through, there was a there was a requirement to put a turning lane in at that. I can't think of the the street. And that was, it was a request by by someone at your same firm to have that turning lane removed. And we talked about, which passed, but we talked about deferring the cost and and putting that turning lane in for future for this project or when that when that land ultimately got developed. So I understand, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, there was a speed study or there was a traffic study done?
There's a multimodal transportation analysis that was done.
Okay. Is is and did it, it's not on here, so I'm assuming, I don't want to assume anything, but I'm assuming because there's no turning lane going in there, didn't warrant it. Is that?
All right. So because this was, this is proposed to be senior golf housing, but standards where we typically require a traffic analysis. The study that was prepared was a safety and multimodal analysis, so the warrants weren't checked.
They were not checked?
No.
Okay. So you're saying we didn't do a a check to see if a turning lane would be required?
No, be because the that study was was waived because the trips were so low.
I understand. Okay. Okay. It's whatever. Okay. That's fine. Staff, anybody else? Shane, do you want to, or Matt, any comments? You're good.
Sorry.
Go ahead, please.
No, I just, one last thing, I just, I I know it would resolve, potentially eliminate some of its traffic or at least pull it down, but it's hard for me to, I've done it in the past, but to make you put something in where we don't have a traffic study that warrants it. Does that make sense? So I I know it was, it was requested when Andrew's Cadillac came through. But right now it's not warranted, so we're good. There is a, has anybody talked to you about the contribution amount?
Yes, we're familiar with it.
Okay, so you, and and are you agreeable to the?
In principle, yes. I think it would be helpful to understand our, to make the comment. I know typically that contribution amount is offsetting some of the impact on infrastructure that the project would have. Whereas in this instance, our project, because of the demographic that will live in our community, generally doesn't have much of an impact. There's not a, to my knowledge, there's no substantial or even marginal infrastructure buildout required. So I think just understanding how the money is being used. Because one thing we are conscious of is the total, that impact fee would increase the cost of the project, which, you know, makes it less. It's not an affordable project by definition, but as you think sorry these days, but it does make it less affordable to future residents, so.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Giles?
Yeah, I think that y'all can pay that. I mean, if it's contrib, you know, it it's voluntarily, but that's been brought up before and there is something going to happen up there. We're the that road Pleasant Grove Road is is going to have to be widened. And I don't know when that's coming, but that's coming. That's going to contribute to it. And while there wasn't a traffic study needed, that traffic going into that facility is going to affect Pleasant Grove Road. So I mean, it is, it it will. It, I mean, there's, I mean, we didn't need the traffic study and I understand why, but 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 it's going to impact that road up there. So I think anybody that travels that road, they know. So and so anyway, you don't have to do it, but it's 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 voluntarily, but I hope that y'all will do that.
When I, maybe one, one question I would have as far as is the impact from the project, does that influence the amount or is it purely fixed, like regardless of?
Commissioner Heffner?
Sorry, thank you. There was a, there was a citywide impact study that was done by a Public Works Director, Andy Barlow. And this is citywide, so it includes impact to administration, it includes infrastructure, it includes all aspects of the city, not just. And I don't have it right in front of me, but I want to say it was somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy five hundred dollars. So we we do have, we do have reports that show where an individual household would contribute on a citywide basis. Happy to share that report to you. I'm sure we can pull it out of the closet or wherever it's at, but I'm happy to show that to you. I think that was done two years ago, three years ago. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, more, yeah, more or less. And or again, if there's any consideration, which maybe there's not, and that's that's fine. For yeah, the use of a project, the impact of a project, and does that ever influence the the dollar amount? But perhaps the answer is no, based on what you're stating. And for the record, we're not like refusing or anything, just wanting to get a better understanding of it, that's all.
Right, Commissioner Giles?
Yeah, so most of the the new developments that's that's coming, that's going to impact on Lebanon Road, they have they have voluntarily said they would give us seventy five hundred dollars. But if y'all want to be good neighbors and give us ten thousand a unit or more, we would gladly take it. So, you know, thank you.
Now, did. Anyone else? Commissioner Milley?
So I'm assuming a decision on that would be made by second reading?
If one's necessary, I guess, I don't, forgive me, I don't know the formal process for that decision. Is it me telling you now if we're going to do it or not?
No, because we, I mean, because if you do agree, then it, second reading, we would adopt it in.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I think it would be helpful. We're absolutely not opposed, just wanting to make sure I understand, um, kind of the, the purpose. It is somewhat unique, and I absolutely see the merits of it in terms of the benefits to the, the town and, and what have you, so.
Okay. I know the city has no, it's, okay, so I do like that this is age restricted. I do like that. It's about seventy, about seventy four self-town homes. And I know the city doesn't have any control over this, but I would like it written into the HOA bylaws and regulations and whatever, that a ten percent rental cap would be included, and also that no more than one owner, and I know right now, all the, all of them are owned by the corporation or whoever.
Yeah, I can, I can kind of address the.
Okay.
The concept about it functions. So, um, as I mentioned earlier, we're a traditional senior housing owner, operator, developer. We only build for ourselves, a family business, second generation, been at thirty six years, not me personally, but the, the business. Father founded it. So the, the business model, as far as ownership versus rental, is, we refer to as an equity model. The actual real estate, so the holder of the deed, the title, will be our Wildlife Community LLC. I mean, and none of the residents that would be moving into the community would be receiving a deed or a title to their home. They would essentially be paying a fee and get an equity interest in that home, functionally not, and again, no, no title. And then, I guess, when the concept of rent is being used, they'd be paying a monthly service fee, which is essentially like an HOA fee. However, it's covering all the services. Our community has five full-time team members. It's maintenance-free living. Someone wants a light bulb changed, our team takes care of that. All maintenance repairs on the homes are all taken care of by us because we own and maintain the real estate. Residents are essentially paying for the right to live there, and then a monthly fee to pay for the services that they receive as a, a resident of the community. Does that make sense? So th- there's not like a rental contract per se. Or there's not like two different occupancy agreements or residency agreements they would sign. It's a single, single fee structure.
Okay. Yeah, this is an unusual one, because I had to ask Joe what that, um, description meant on that horizontal or whatever it was. I had never heard that before.
Yeah, and, and I know one of the, I guess to specifically address the concern of how do you ensure that it stays age restricted? Well, part of that is because there's no, um, any resident that moves in there, not, they're not the ones reselling the home when a resident moves out. We are, and again, we're, we're selling the right to live in the home, not the individual home itself. There's no change of titles or deeds that's happening. We will be the sole owner of the real estate. Again, folks are paying for the right to live there. So because of that, and we are operating it as a retirement community, we restrict the, A, we qualify folks based on their age, whether they can live there or not. So no families, no one under fifty five would be living there.
So what happens if you sell the entire thing?
So typically, um, and again, we, uh, this, I want to make it clear, there's no intention of that. Most of what we build, we build for ourselves, and we are sort of desired to operate it in perpetuity. But the way that that would work typically, and again, thinking about this from a senior housing development, is anyone we sold it to would be buying the business, if you will. It's not our intention. And they would be typically required to assume all of our contracts. And each of those residency agreements with the individuals that live in the community will lay out the, the rules, the bylaws of that community, which would prevent someone under fifty five from living there. So they wouldn't be able to, um, a new owner couldn't just go and change that.
Okay. Yeah, I just, uh, typically, thi- this is an unusual one. I don't think I've ever voted on one like that before. But anyway, typically, we do that to avoid it turning into a rental, you know, overburdened by, by rentals. Okay. Okay.
All right. I want to draw the attention to, uh, planning and zoning, number one, which is, it says the base zoning district shall be RM eight in lieu of RM sixteen due to the density proposed. And then also thirty one under planning, which is to please provide information within the deed and covenants, keeping this development age restricted forever. So those two items on there, I know they don't need a vote, but I'm going to ask that we vote to codify those, and that the header and the fourth whereas be updated along with section one to reflect the RM eight base zoning. So all in favor of updating the header and the whereas is, please signify by, by saying aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? So we're on this once amended. Also, under public works, number one, it said the vol, the following variances are required, or requested are required, which is A, a cul-de-sac to exceed fourteen units, B, a cul-de-sac to exceed seven hundred feet, and C, to allow private streets, D, slopes greater than twenty percent. I'm going to make a motion to adopt that. Have a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Back on this as twice amended. Under, back under planning, it's under number thirty eight. It says the planning commission granted a waiver to five one oh four two, allowing fifteen feet minimum building separations, as long as the buildings have fire suppression sprinkler systems. Thirty nine, it says the planning commission granted a waiver to five one oh four four, allowing, you know, minutes of a perimeter fence. And then forty one, the planning commission granted a variance to four one fourteen, allowing fifty percent secondary materials on all facades. And then forty two, the planning commission supports termination at line of deed restriction on the west, requiring the yard continue from unit twenty one due east to include units eight through seventeen and one through four. I'm going to make a motion that the board of commissioners adopt those four. It's your second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? So we're back on the ordinance now as amended three times. Commissioner Giles, you have the floor.
Okay, so Commissioner Malley, I, I thought, and I want to direct this to you, but I want the attorney to, because I thought from the planning commission that we were told this was going to, and I'm, and I might be wrong, was going to, was going to be fee simple ownership. Are you saying that it's not? And are you also saying if it's not fee simple, it's the other, whatever that's called, the abbreviation, whatever? I don't know, I forget what it is. I thought this is what this was going to be, so that these people would own those. You can own the whole thing, but they would own those units.
Can I just say?
Yes.
That was my error in the planning commission. I understood that they were individually deeded. So when you asked if they were for rent or for sale, I said they were for sale. And that was my error in not understanding the way that it was done.
So now you're saying that they're not?
They're still individually deeded. But the intention is that, that one person will own them all.
They're, okay. But they're not individually deeded to the person living there?
That's right. So.
Okay, well.
Their request of the zoning would be that they're individually deeded as opposed to, um, the entire parcel being a single parcel for all, you know, seventy four doors. And then the owner would be essentially a single member LLC that would actually own each of those homes. And then functionally, for the resident, the way that works is they pay a fee, a, a large check, if you will, very much like buying the home, they're not receiving the deed in exchange for that. And we, this is our business model that we do today across the majority of our communities. In return for that fee, they receive the right to live there. We treat it as their home, but they don't actually own that home, nor are they responsible for maintaining that home. We are, needs a new roof. It's our, we replace it, maintenance, anything, all covered. And then the individual owners, and we don't call it a, a rental fee, they then pay a monthly service fee, which is paying for the five full-time, uh, team members that'll work at that community, and then any maintenance expenses, upkeep. It's a very amenity-rich community, a pool, pickleball, a dog park, maintenance of all the common areas, that's all covered by our company. And how we maintain the integrity of the, the product is that we own the real estate.
Which basically apartments.
No, we're not liking it. It's a senior, it's a, it's a senior housing community. For example, you all are familiar with Harmony Senior Living here. I believe they have independent living apartments. This product is not a vertical product like that. It's all single-family attached due to the, when we ran into the constraints on the site, we, to get the density, we needed to still be here, we want to be in Mount Juliet. We had to, um, go to more like duet-type model versus all detached, single-family homes, which is the original intention, but, I guess what I would liken it to is almost a hybrid between, say, what Harmony does in their independent living and what Del Webb does in their homes. Does that make sense? Maybe most folks, I'm sure, are familiar with the Del Webb that's here in town. The difference between, say, that community and ours is we own the real estate and maintain that real estate, as well as have full-time team members that are, uh, you know, part of my team, um, that help operate the community, provide services. And then we also, um, we'll be, we'll be operating a home health company out of the community as, as well, to provide services to our residents, to help them age in place, as well as provide services. I mean, that's all a card to individuals in the greater Mount Juliet area.
Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
I'm just going to go back to the, uh, I guess to the different agencies, maybe even the attorney. Is this the first time we've ever had something like this? Or is this, because again, it seems like we keep, I don't want to say spinning it, but it seems like we are trying to sugarcoat it to make it sound like it's similar to another development, but in reality, it's not. So is this going to affect our zoning of any sort?
I, it is a pun, that's correct, but I have not personally heard of this type of setup, so I can't really speak. This, this is completely new to me, so I, I agree with you, it kind of sounds like, what you're saying, it does, but.
It's almost like a VRBO. It's like we are, I mean, I mean, I'm. Yeah, yeah, a little more permanent. Just, uh, just real quick, I mean, like, is this a, like a gated community, like a private roads and all that? So everything is all maintained and, and.
That's right. Yeah, for safety and security reasons, it's our preference if the municipality allows it to gate our communities. And so that is the, that is in the, the plans that have been, been submitted. So gated, so all private roads.
Okay. So I guess there's, since this can be like, almost like the first type of community in our city, so.
If this were to pass on first reading, I'll get with Ms. Hamblin and talk about it as it relates to zoning, just to be sure, but.
Yeah. I'm just concerned about, you know, being the first, is there any questions we're missing? And how do we make sure that, let's just say that, you know, like, um, like you do turn it in, you know, like this thing passes, and then all of a sudden, maybe the market's not there, because, you know, like, we just had a, another project that came in as a PUD, and then it passed, and then a couple, what, eight, nine months later, they came back and said there was no market here for age restriction, and they came back and asked for a variance. So to me, it's just, okay, so how do we keep that from happening again? Well, I understand that for that project, I'm saying for this one again, so. And since this one's being so complicated, is there anything we're missing? So again, I'm just asking to make sure we cross our Ts and dot the Is with our staff.
So you're going to take that between first and second reading for Ms. Hamblin?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't anticipate it being an issue. I mean, how it's paid for is really no concern, or shouldn't be of the board, but, um.
I'm not worried about how it's zoned. I mean, like, I'm more concerned about how it's zoned. Again, it's just, I mean, it's coming in as a PUD, I understand that, but at the same time, is there anything that we're missing that needs to be highlighted that we missed and, and passed, right? You know, like we look at.
The PUD is what allows for it, so.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah.
And if it would be helpful, forgive me, if it would be helpful, we can supply, um, like a sample residency agreement that would lay that, that's maybe not be relevant for, from a zoning standpoint, but at least in terms of, uh, the, the concept of how the, the ownership works.
Did you want the floor, Commissioner?
Sure. It's just conceptually, I, I don't have too much heartburn over a rental community that's owned by one entity. I mean, we have people in neighborhoods, individuals renting homes. We have, we know that's going on, VRBOs. In this situation, you have one owner that's maintaining all of the property versus you may have in one neighborhood, fifty different individuals, it's maybe keeping up with their rental property or not. Maybe they don't even live in the state of Tennessee. So in, in, you know, looking at it through that lens, I don't, I don't have, conceptually, I don't have an issue with that. I think, I think you'd do a much better job than a hundred individual homeowners trying to maintain, trying to maintain their houses. They don't get the grass cut or whatever, so.
That's part of the value for those that live in the community, is you're guaranteed that there's going to be consistently, I mean, it's almost like a private, I don't want to confuse the, this any further, but, um, almost like a private HOA, just we are the HOA, and it is a business for profits, we make a margin.
People can live there, they don't have to.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a big issue with that.
Right, Commissioner Giles?
Down the road from where this is proposed, there is, is one called the reserves. Isn't that what it's called? If I'm not mistaken. Pleasant, something, reserves, yeah, yeah.
That's right. Fifty-five plus, um, townhomes.
And like this, that is. But they, they own theirs, but the HOA takes care of, of their mowing and takes care of their stuff like that. So we all make mistakes, but I'd like to know when you realized that you had made that mistake to the planning commission?
Uh, it, between.
No, her.
And I'm sorry, I understood at the time of the planning commission meeting that these were individually deeded, and that that was how they were, that was how it was presented to me, and they're still owned. I guess what I learned later was that it would all be owned by the same person.
Okay.
And when did I realize that? Sometime between planning commission and now.
Okay, and my next question is, why that wasn't that communicated to us prior?
I asked about the best way to present that to you, and I was counseled to do that here.
Okay, thank you.
And to have people who knew about it to do that.
And I would add too, it doesn't change the, how the zoning is treated, to my, to my knowledge, or our, our knowledge. Like, there's no, and I believe that was stated by council.
All right. Well, only. Commissioner Layley?
And I talked to Joe today, and unless I misunderstood, I thought he said, and, and what this is called is horizontal property regime ownership arrangement. I took what he told me to mean what, what you thought, that the, um, whoever buys the town home owns the ground underneath. Okay, so.
Yeah, so from a zoning standpoint, that is correct. The difference is, we have no intention on selling the ground underneath to any residents that desire to live in that community. We're going to sell them the right to live there, um, and then charge them the monthly service fee. And what makes this difference from, say, a true rental product, is they will pay a fee to, to move in, and then when we resell the home, they actually share in the appreciation. That's why we call it an equity model. And that's just how the, the fee is working, but they are not getting a deed to the land. And that is how we maintain control and integrity of the actual operation of the community and set the monthly service fees and things of that nature.
So when they decided, when they decide they're ready to move and they sell, it's not really them selling, it's.
That's right. We're reselling their home, and then they're getting a, a meaningful percentage. We're basically taking a fee when we resell their, their home.
So they get a percentage?
Yes, yeah. So generally speaking, ninety percent. So all, for example, so I'm making these numbers up to make my math easy. Someone pays us a hundred thousand dollars for the home, and then to, to move in, uh, you know, right of use, then they pay a monthly service fee on top of that to pay for all the services, the maintenance, the wellness classes, the fitness classes, the concierge, things of that nature, um, for us to maintain everything, landscaping, interior maintenance, security, all that. What happens then, let's say we, they move out, however many years later, five years later, we sell it for two hundred thousand dollars, we're going to give them ninety percent of that, and we're going to take a ten percent fee for basically operating this community. to take a 10% fee for basically operating this community. It'll be our salesperson selling. 10% of the purchase price. And then the way the contract works is they're guaranteed 90% of the money back. So, for example, pay $100,000, we write them a promissory note that says, no matter what, we're going to pay you $90,000 when we resell this home to someone else, and then we're, anything above what you paid, so the 100 grand, you get all of it minus a 10% fee to us. And that, how that works, again, so functions like homeownership, but not, because there's no, there's no deeds or titles changing hands. It's just the right to live there.
Well, that's where I was confused. What's the difference in that in a rental or a lease, if you will, but then-
You could make, you could make an argument, it is a rental with a, with a buy-in model. So the best example of this would be if you were to research entry fee retirement communities, it's essentially that same, same model. There's, there's none in Mount Juliet, there's multiples in the greater Nashville, MSA.
Okay, so it's like, not like when they move out, they get nothing?
That's right. That's right. Because it's been our experience that most folks prefer to own their own home, as opposed to it be like a rental, if that makes sense.
All right. All right. All in favor of 13E and F? And 13F was amended three times. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? A dusk pass on first reading with a vote of three to two, so. Let's see, we're skipping the next, we're skipping the next meeting, and then we're not in session the last meeting, the last normal meeting time, so this would be back the first meeting of June. Okay, so this second reading would be on the agenda for the first meeting of June, so got a little, little time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
June 9th. Next item is 13H, an ordinance to amend the land use plan for the property known as Marabella Subdivision, located on Lebanon Road, map 55, parcel 70.02 and 70.03, from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial. Have a motion. And a second. 13H, this is the land use plan is on the table. Vice Mayor, you're recognized, sir.
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and expressing their concerns. I will also add in here that we have met up with the developer multiple times to discuss this land here, what, you know, like, how's it going to affect the neighbors? They've covered all those bases, to the best of my knowledge. The reason why I'm in support of this is because it is a lot slower development. You know, they have also reached out to the school board, our superintendent, to make sure that it is not going to affect the schools. And according to those folks right there, that is something that they've highlighted, that it will not affect the schools, and that the schools are able to handle the additional load, and also the fact that this is going to be a little bit slower development, which is going to be able to help out offset because of the rezoning for some of the schools as well. So I'm in favor of this. This is one of the developers that have come to, to, I guess, multiple meetings to be able to, you know, hash out all the different challenges compared to other developers. They're more into just basically coming in and presenting what they have to offer, and they have been back and forth, so that's why I'm in favor of this project, so. Mayor, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Commissioner Heffner, you're recognized.
I've, to have met with the developers on a few occasions, and I just, there's a couple of interesting things I wanted to point out. Number one, this is a private gated community, and with that, they bear the response, the financial responsibility to maintain the roads. It's not, it's not a burden to the taxpayers of Mount Juliet, and the sidewalks. It's all within their gated community. Speaking of sidewalks, 57,810 linear feet, roughly 11 miles. 44,000 linear feet of asphalt road that the city doesn't have to pay for or maintain. Pathways, this is in addition to the sidewalks, 40,946 linear feet, roughly eight miles of greenway within their community that the city citizens don't have to pay for. Another interesting fact, we, we added this property in conjunction with our expansion of our UGB. This was specifically noted when we expanded the UGB to include this property in Mount Juliet UGB. They're not that far from Lebanon, actually. The city limit is Lebanon. And their, the access to water is not that far from Lebanon. So we included this in our, in our UGB, just wanted to make note of that. And I understand they're looking for a Phase 1, which is roughly 60 houses. I believe it's roughly 60 houses, and they're, they're agreeable to phase this out over seven, eight years. And if there's a representative that can come up on the mic and confirm this, but they have agreed as a voluntary contribution of $7,500. That's 3.2.
We're just on the land use at the moment.
Sorry. Maybe I'll say it twice then. But things that should be taken in consideration when we're looking at, because I know things at the planning commission fail. They never make it past the land use, because they're looking at the land use, so maybe it's worth noting that there's, there's some, we'll get to this later when we get past the land use, but I think it's worth noting, so.
I'll say, the, the land use did come out of the planning commission with a positive recommendation, so. The other two got negatives, but this one did.
No, typically, sometimes projects do fail land use, and they never get a chance to-
Plead their case.
To plead their case for, on the PMDP.
Yeah. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Giles?
So, I know we're lit, we're, we're hearing just the, the land use right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I talked to the attorney, I talked to the representative, we're not going to hear all three of these together, so we're just going to hear them individually, but we need, I assume, but we, we, we need an amendment, which I don't mind to put in there, that says that if it doesn't pass, because I don't think it's in here, but by the second reading of preliminary development plan, correct?
How about this?
That it would resort back, it wouldn't be approved.
This, this is approved contingent upon the annexation and the PUD passage. Would that work? Ooh, you got specific language, I like it.
Plus, if, if I may continue, and I don't, and Mayor, this may not be where to put this to, but it's also contingent upon them having signed documentation that they have executed for the sewer.
I, I think that's already in there. I think that was one of Public Works' conditions.
Okay, okay. It is, okay. I missed that, okay. My bad, Giles, okay.
Do you want me to read the?
Please do.
All right. Should the associated preliminary master development plan and planned unit development fail to receive approval from the Board of Commissioners, the land use amendment shall be void.
Then, I'll second. Any questions or comments on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Back on the, 13H is once amended. Commissioner Layly?
Yeah, just like Commissioner Heffner said, we recently expanded our urban growth boundary, and the purpose of having an urban growth boundary is to eventually expand the city and eventually annex, so, of course, we can't automatically annex, it has to be requested, but I, I agree that there is a reason this was expanded, and so that, you know, it is included in our urban growth boundary, so I do support that.
Yeah, questions and comments on the land use amendment? All right. All in favor of 13H as once amended, please signify by saying aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Nay. Any abstentions? That does pass. Any objection to reading aye and j at the same time? All right. 13I, which is an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet approximately 403.44 acres of property located off Beckwith Road, Lebanon Road, and Bass Lane, map 55, parcel 70.02, 70.03, 92, 92.04, 102, and located within the city's urban growth boundary. 13J, which is an ordinance to rezone approximately 403.44 acres of property off Beckwith Road, Lebanon Road, and Bass Lane, map 55, parcel 70.02, 70.03, 92, and 92.04, 102, from Wilson County R1 to RS40 and CNS PUD, and to adopt the preliminary master development plan for Marabella Subdivision. Have a motion, motion and second. 13I and J, both the annexation and the PUD are on the table. Mr. Heffner?
So I'm just going to finish my thoughts. I won't repeat everything I just said. Heard it once. But what I was getting right, I was doing the math on the $7,500 contribution, the total units, it comes out to 3.2 million dollars, 3.255, to be exact, which I would like 100% of that to go, excuse me, to go towards Lebanon Road widening. I got some. It is.
Right. So, if, so the recommend, your, if I got it right, 3.255 million to go to the Lebanon Road widening project?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second? Questions or comments on the amendment? Commissioner Giles?
So that people know, okay? That would be for the widening of Lebanon Road to the school, because that's the city.
Correct.
Right. It wouldn't be further than that. But we've got to come up with more money for TDOT to put that on their, their, their plan, that's not even on the tenure. So what we're trying to do is get that expedited up to a quicker one, and this, this really helps, but, and, and I've got an idea too, but not tonight.
Okay.
So I'll talk to them later.
Any questions or comments on the contribution?
Shane?
Just make sure that that is paid at the issuance of the erosion control permit as permits are pulled.
Erosion control issuance of the erosion control permits?
Yes, sir.
You have a second, and any problem with that?
I have no problems.
Okay. All right, so it's, the amendment was to, to take a $7,500 contribution per lot, which was, comes out to a total of 3.255 million, 100% of that to be allocated for the Lebanon Road widening from the, from the school onward, and the contributions will be collected at the issuance of the erosion control permit. Do we have representation? And you're, you're in agreement with this?
I have one question. One question is, is it the erosion control permit for each home?
Yes.
Okay, then yes.
Okay. All right. We ready to vote? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we're back on 13I and 13J as once amended. Commissioner Layly, you have the floor.
Okay. All right. If this development was already built, I would not support the annexation, because we're not prepared with our police and fire. However, looking to the future and the timeline, I talked to the fire chief, and you, you can speak on that as well, we hope to build a Station 4 and a Station 5 eventually. So the Station 4 would cover this area, and the timeline that we talked about was four to five years, if you want to expand on that.
Mr. Fire Chief?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. We anticipate probably starting construction of Station 4, we're hoping to, within three to five years. We're constantly looking at property in that area where that station is needed, and so developers had met with us from the very beginning, before they even proposed anything to the planning commissioner otherwise, about this project and what we would need for that. With their projected build-out times, we feel like that, that will put that station within our, what is, what I would call our operational boundaries to provide better service for that. They're currently, the entire subdivision would currently be outside of our five-mile radius, which is what ISO classifies as a Class 10 ISO rating, but they, I believe they agreed during the planning commission, et cetera, to sprinkle the homes in that subdivision, and then we would provide, that would provide fire protection.
Chief, they are, they are indicating that they did not agree to that.
So, but we are, from what I understood at planning commission, it was, that was, that was, that's what I would recommend, is the sprinkling of homes in the subdivision, because without that, we are with, we are over five miles. They will be a Class 10 ISO rating in that subdivision, as far as their insurance rates, ability to get insurance, et cetera, as current. As we build stations and it comes within that five-mile range, those houses would no longer be a Class 10 rating, they would pull our rating, which is currently a Class 3. We, we can provide service to the neighborhood, we've stated that from the start, and with their build-out timeframes, we don't, we don't feel like we'll have an issue providing service. Our response times are going to be longer than what we normally would see operationally, because a lot of our other homes are within two and a half to three miles of our fire stations, and that's what we're, our goal is to have most of our built-up on structures within two and a half to three miles.
Okay. So, let's see. Question for the engineers. I was told, you had mentioned six, seven years on Phase 1, so I was informed that Phase 1, which would be 50, 60 homes, would be about four years away?
Well, I think if, if we are successful in getting this approved, I mean, we would be starting construction as soon as possible, but that's still probably next year before we would be starting construction, and then it's probably, you know, maybe another year before homes would be, you know, constructed. So yes, you're probably talking about, you know, a year and a half to two years before anybody would be living in there, in a, in a ideal scenario, certainly, that, that could be, you know, later than that. So.
Okay. So time-wise, I think that would work out good for Phase 1, and that way it would give us time to get that Station 4.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And also, police, we hire an average of six officers a year, thereabouts, so if we could stay on that trend, we would have the personnel to cover that area, so.
Recently, our aver, our hiring average has been a little lower than that, but the issue for us will be very similar to what chief folks talked to. I view this as not much different than, you know, a larger version of Savannah Point. The bigger issue we have with addressing Savannah Point is the travel time to get to that location. So the bigger issue for us would be expanding our zones, that we could be in this neighborhood in a reasonable amount of time and covering that travel distance. So I don't, with the timeline that you're looking at, and with the support of the commission that we've been receiving, I wouldn't see that as being a problem.
Okay. Let's see. The, what is the commercial timeline, or has that been discussed? Completion of the commercial?
I think that's going to be a future phase, for sure, because that's all the way up, it's all the way up on Highway 70 there, so Lebanon Road. We, the first phase of the development is going to be serviced by gravity sewer, but there's a large ridge in the middle of the, of the project, so there would be a pump station that would be required to service the, the, the commercial up on Lebanon Road. So it's a significant amount of time before that would be coming online. That's a lot of infrastructure that would have to get constructed before that could come online.
Well, I didn't know if it had been discussed or not. Okay. I like that the streets inside are private, it's gated. Is there going to be a second location for the male kiosk, since this spans a big area? Has that been discussed?
Can you elaborate?
At the time, the last discussion we had, that they were looking at various locations throughout the development because of the proximity of where the original male kiosk was going to be placed, so that is something that we can- was going to be placed, so that is something that we can work through with the developers to get that prior to FMDP.
Okay, because I think at least two.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do you want to add color to that?
Hmm.
We would love to have more than one specifically for that reason. It's really, as many as the USPS will allow us.
Okay.
Sometimes they don't want their, their trucks going to fifty locations.
Right.
You know, we also don't want four hundred people going to one location.
Right. Yeah. I don't think that would be good. Okay. The base zoning is RS forty, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. They will not need to do any change in that. The only change for the zoning would be on the front portion where the commercial would be to CNS, which would be the Commercial Neighborhood Services.
Okay. I do like that part. Page two forty-nine, let's see if I got that, maybe I didn't make a copy. Well, I guess I didn't make a copy. All right, has it been discussed at what point the signal would be installed? Back with?
The signal would be installed.
Excuse me, sir. Sorry. Go ahead, please.
Sorry, the signal would be installed as warranted with each phase, so that just keeps submitting signal warrant analysis, but we would need to codify that.
Okay, all right. The singer is better.
Although technically, hmm, sorry, I'm just thinking now, technically that signal is a county improvement, not a city improvement, as this does not abut a city road, so I would defer to, to Ms. Burnett about whether we can specify when they're required to do that.
Because the county road commissioner did agree.
Yes, the.
Yes.
This is, will be the second signal owned by the county. This is rare, but they did agree.
If it's not in our control, then I would likely say no.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's just going to be open-ended as to when that will be built?
It's out of our hands.
The development's paying for it, correct?
Correct.
And there's, and we have no way to, to put a trigger on that as to when they pay for it.
Not without.
Are you considering that in the?
Sorry, I, I must have misunderstood. I sup, like a trigger like we do with CO triggers type of thing, I don't see why we couldn't do that, if, if they're paying for it and it's.
County's taking it.
I'll have to think on that one.
Can we take care of that at second reading? Okay. Also, the turn, the new turn lanes further east, I know that's a further phase, but I, I would like that there to be some kind of trigger in that, you know, further, further down, whatever y'all public works attorney thinks would be appropriate.
The county's absolutely going to require that just immediately.
Immediately.
The second you touch their right away, the state as well, the second you touch that right away, you're putting in those turn lanes.
Okay. Well, that's fine with me. Sooner the better.
We, we can trigger that one if you want, but they, they're on it.
Okay. All right. As far as schools, I know that was already mentioned, they have spoken to the director Latrell, always said Latrell, Luttrell, and he did state that's not a problem. The, the school's responsibility is as the cities, counties grow, when a individual school reaches eighty-five percent capacity, it's the school's responsibility and the commission, whoever, to go out and start looking at property. This was the case with West Elementary and the new elementary school that's open, I don't know the timeline on the opening, but, so that was a perfect situation there with the capacity at West. So that new elementary out in La, La Gordo area is, are, you know, is, that's just a perfect example. And that's each individual school. When they hit eighty-five percent, it's the school's job to go out and look for new land and then start the process of building a new school. Let's see, we talked about volunteer. Okay, so as far as property values, I do believe this, this, this is just top-notch. I do believe this will be beneficial to property owners and increase values. As far as sewer, I know that that's been worked out, so my question is, what happens if this gets approved and you cannot work out the sewer? And it might be an attorney question as far as the annexation, because I don't want to be stuck with four hundred dollar, uh, four hundred acres annexed into the city if this sewer fails to go through.
I can read the same type of garbage that I did for the land use and just switch out the words for an amendment, so that way the annexation would be void if the PMDP or PUD does not pass.
Okay.
Because I've got concerns about tying up that capacity on paper if it's not going to happen, so.
I can go ahead and read the language for an amendment if you want.
Okay.
Certainly. Please.
I thought that Public Works had that already in there. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I didn't hear the question.
I think the commissioner's just specifically talking about the annexation not passing, so then if the annex, I'm sorry, about the PMDP not passing, then the annexation would also revert, just like we did with the land use, which would also tie in the sewer.
Okay, I thought those two were included a while ago in your.
That was just the land use.
Land, land use, if these two ordinances did not pass, what commissioner's requesting is if they're not able to secure sewer, that the annexation and the, does not happen and the PUD does not take effect.
Right, but I thought I was told that that was in the sewers, in Public Works comments.
For the PMDP, is it not?
I'm seeing a no. Shane?
The only comment we've got regarding sewer is that they've got to show proof of easements before the second reading, or at the time of approval of the PMDP.
To show what?
To show, uh, proof of off, all off-site sewer easements.
Okay, so that's why I brought that up before Commissioner Malley, because we need, we need that written, we need that proof of that written agreement, that they acquired that easement prior to that second reading.
And, and that's what Shane is saying, that proof of the easement.
Okay, well, to me, I just, it needs to be, you know.
It's a specific line in the PMDP.
So this would be the annexation in the rezon.
I can go ahead and read it.
Please do.
Okay. This would be for thirteen I, the order to annex, I would recommend to the board that they include the amendment that should the associated preliminary master development plan and planned unit development fail to receive approval from the Board of Commissioners, the annexation and plan of services shall be void.
Motion, that's a motion.
I'll second. Questions or comments on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment to thirteen I, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Commissioner Malley?
I have one more motion, and then that was all I had. I would like to make a motion to add a ten percent rental cap on the entire development, and then state that no more than one owner can own more than two homes. That's a motion.
It's a motion to go under planning, under thirteen J?
Is it? Yes.
Okay.
And this would be, um.
So that's your motion, is there a second on that?
And thi, this would be written in, in the HOA. The city can't enforce that, but I would like it written into the HOA bylaws and all that, and it would be up to the HOA to enforce.
Can I ask for a clarification on the, the homeownership one?
Let's, she's made a motion, do we have a second on this?
Well, I've got questions. Can I have a question, do I need a second?
Need a second if we're going to discuss.
I have a second.
All right, so got a second. Sorry, what was your question, and now, then the floor's going to Commissioner Giles.
I just wasn't sure I understood the, the, the homeownership limitation. One, one person can only own two homes?
Correct.
Yeah, it's kind of a, um, what's the word? For example, keeps American homes for rent.
I see.
From coming in there and one to two at a time, eventually owning all the homes, you know what I'm saying?
I understand.
So, yeah, that's the purpose of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Giles, then we're gonna, then I'm gonna turn the floor to their attorney.
Okay, well, that's, I'm just turning to, can, can we legally do that?
I would recommend that the board not do that, no. That is for an HOA to consider, it's not for the board to consider.
Well, I'm in agreeance with Commissioner Malley. I don't want to do something that's going to come back on us, but I think that this is something that I doubt very, I doubt very seriously they would come in and buy this, this price point homes, but then again, I don't know, I don't know a whole lot about, so.
Yeah. Again, the city cannot enforce it, but I would like it written into the HOI bylaws and all that, and then it's up to the HOA to enforce.
Is there a consideration for more than two, in case there's a family, maybe there's a family that has three or four homes? You already have a rental, you're asking for a rental restriction, so.
Yeah, ten percent cap in the entire, I personally don't like.
Like, ten percent would be four. Single entity ownership would be four homes.
Of the entire PUD?
Right.
Of the four hundred homes?
Right.
Or three or whatever.
Just to give some flexibility in case, you know, whoever buys a home and they want their mom and dad next to them, and they want their aunt and uncle over there, you know, whatever it is.
I don't know, feedback from the board, that's typically, I, that's what we do.
My feedback is the attorney just advised us not to. Commissioner Heffner?
That's my feedback. Why, why would we go to this extent, put something in a PUD that we can't enforce? I mean, it's, it's wasting time. Can't enforce it, why are we doing it?
Because the HOA can enforce it.
Well, let the HOA decide that. They're made up of the owners, the residents. I mean, they're elected, just like we are, they, they're going to be held accountable for how they manage their, their, their neighborhood and their HOA. I, I think it's, we can't enforce it, so why, why do it?
Well, we've done it several times before.
I stopped the blasting restrictions two months ago.
I know, that was a.
Blast away, blast away.
Same thing.
Because we can't enforce it, so why?
We've never been able to enforce it, but we've done this on several developments.
Yeah, but it's just, it just doesn't make any sense to do it. I mean, you, you guys are going to control the HOA as the developers, you're going to control it until a certain percentage, and then it's going to be turned over to the homeowners. Are you agreeable to Commissioner Malley's request?
I mean, we can confer with the owners.
Okay.
Who will actually do it, so if you, if it's, if it's required or going to be required, then we can talk about it by the second reading.
Okay.
If that's okay.
All right, I'll pull the motion and bring it up again at second reading.
Okay, are you, any objections to retracting the motion? Hearing none, okay, we're back on thirteen J and thirteen I as once a minute each. Vice Mayor?
All right, first of all, thank you guys for being up here, this is a big project, it's very important, obviously, there's a lot of concern here. The only other concern that I want to go back to is what our fire chief said when it comes to safety. All of us up here are very concerned about safety, and, and, and the comment about sprinkling of the, sprinkling of the homes that was discussed at planning, what changed from then till now? Why is that an issue?
I think I did clarify at planning commission that that was not our, that was not our understanding. I think.
I recall him saying that, and I think I recall too, saying it was never been brought up.
That's correct.
And I brought it up to you, or to representatives when I met with you guys about the sprinkler, I called the fire chief and asked to confirm, and, and, I mean, it's just, the distance is an issue, so.
Yeah.
But I remember that, the planning commission, that that was not something.
Sure.
I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, not willing to do, or don't want to do, and I think we've got, I don't know what the ramifications are around us requiring sprinklers.
The city cannot require sprinklers, the only circumstance in which we could is if we had passed a specific ordinance that mandated, that sprinklers are mandatory in one or two family dwellings, and that requires a specific vote, vote, vote by the board, there's very specific requirements to have that in place.
Well, I'm going to go back to this, okay, you're giving the homeowners, I mean, this is a very high-end homes, uh, community, it is gated, so there's going to be delay for the, you know, for the first responders, even if we do have, you know, a building four that's out there, and again, that's, that's, you know, several years down the road, okay? Your end user is the one that's going to be at risk. Obviously, we're going to be able to get there in, in, in a timely manner, but every minute counts when your house is on fire. So, you know, to me, by next reading, I, I, I really recommend considering, speaking with the owners and seeing what their thoughts are, you know, Nolanville does it, I got a buddy of mine that actually lives in a home over there, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar home, it's normal, I mean, that's what these homes are, they're going to be high-end homes, they are looking at, you know, the best of the best product, and this is something that's going to, if anything, help them out with the in, uh, the insurance as well as the protection of the individuals, so.
Sure, and I, we are, we're happy to take it under consideration and.
Sure.
And come back with a, I just wanted to state on the record that we had, we had not committed to that prior, that's all.
Yeah.
So.
Commissioner Heffner?
Just to offer up a suggestion here, I know we're worried about the timing of the fire station and these earlier phases, what if, what if we had a trigger that after the fire station is operational, then those later phases that would come after would not warrant the sprinklers? Does, it doesn't make sense to put them in all four hundred homes if we're going to have a fire station built in three years?
Sure, I mean, that sounds very reasonable.
And, and the other thing I wanted, do we not have a mutual aid agreement with WEMA?
Mutual aid, yes, automatic aid, no.
What's, how is the mutual aid been working out for us, or not?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The mutual aid, we have a mutual aid agreement with WEMA, we do not have an automatic aid agreement with WEMA, so we are not automatically dispatched to, to properties. So to give you an example, the homes behind our fire station at, at Green Hill, on Green Hill Road, those homes are in the county, we would never know that a dispatch is happening to those houses, even though we're across the street. And so that's the same way with WEMA, they would never know they are, that we are being dispatched to a property within the city limits. WEMA doesn't, there's, they're not aware of that, we do not have a mutual aid agreement in place with them, we have a mu, or automatic aid agreement. We do, we do respond mutual aid with them by request. We've recently responded to a house fire at Lakeview with them by mutual aid request, and that happens quite commonly, both for ambulances and the fire department, so it's a, and the fire responses.
Is it just because our systems aren't communicating with one another, or?
It's, it's because that, right now, mutual aid agreement, we do not have to have a written agreement in place to provide mutual aid, that's a state law that allows you to provide that provision, uh, without having written agreements in place, we just do not have a mutual aid or a automatic aid agreement with them, a written agreement with the county for that response. You have to have that re, you have to have that in place before an automatic aid agreement can happen.
So is that a, is that a, a system upgrade, or is that a, what is that?
Policy upgrade.
It's a policy upgrade? It's paperwork?
It's policy.
Paperwork.
It's basically what you would, you would have to approve that agreement as well as the county commission would have to approve that agreement.
Because as, as a resident of Wilson County, and as a resident of Mount Juliet, I pay taxes twice, I pay for emergency services twice, one to the county for WEMA, and then the city for, so if it's a paperwork issue, why can't we, why can't we work through the paperwork?
Well, it's more than, it's a policy issue.
A policy.
It's more than, it's more than paperwork, it's what the board, this board would have to approve that agreement, the county commission would have to approve that agreement.
And maybe this is a conversation for another time, but I, I just wanted to address the concerns about, well, the response times, well, I get it, but we have a partner in EMS, and that's WEMA, that if there's some policy that needs to be changed, we need to take a look at it, because I, I'm a citizen, I'm paying taxes, I'm paying county taxes.
Well, it's, and it's the same way.
Paying it twice for emergency services, and I'm not.
Yeah, it's the same way with EMS, we, we have the same agreement, there's no automatic aid agreement, so they don't automatically get dispatched if there's an ambulance call, even though they may have an ambulance closer, it, it happens to where it's automa, it's a mutual aid deal to where we, they respond into the city if needed on an act request basis.
Okay.
And we do the same for them, if there are ambulances on this side of the county, then we respond into the county with an ambulance for them, but there's no automatic to that when it comes to that.
Because it requires a policy change.
Yeah, and there, and there is a state law, and I'm not sure exactly how that works with the county, uh, as far as how they're, they do their budget within fire, but there is a state law against a county-wide fire department having taxing citizens within the, within any local jurisdiction within a city for that service, and so that is supposed to, to not happen, per state law.
Per state law, there, uh, there, uh, only. Per state law, they're, uh, they're only allowed to use site-of-space taxes or revenue sources already shared with the municipalities, or to enter into another agreement or create fire tax districts, and.
And that's for the fire response, that doesn't, not EMS, but for the fire response side of that, that is the law.
Okay.
They would argue that none of your county taxes go to pay for ti, fire.
Interesting.
Yeah, it really is interesting.
But, but one more thing, Chief, uh, but you're okay with them phasing maybe the earlier phases of the homes until the fire station is built, and then the latter phases?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we, as long as we can cover, and, and that's my recommendation, is sprinkler systems, as, as our city attorney mentioned.
Until, until such a point where the fire station's built, right?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I, I would recommend sprinkler systems at any time, especially for this large of a home, um, because they do save lives, there's never been a reported, or there's never been a documented death in a residence that has sprinkler systems, working sprinkler systems in place, they save lives, so I'm, I'm a huge proponent of sprinkler systems, but as our city attorney mentioned, this is a, a recommendation because we cannot require them, uh, by law unless you all approve that, and that would have to be an over, an overriding ordinance that we do it within the parameters you set forth in that ordinance, but I mean, that's, it would be my recommendation, just for the residents there, I mean, just, a class 10 ISO rating means insurance rates are probably going to be at least 10 times what your insurance rates are.
For those residents.
If you can find insurance.
Yes, if you could find a carrier that will write you a policy for.
On a class 10 ISO rating.
Yeah, ju, just to be clear, for those residents, not the city of Mount Juliet, we're not going to.
Yes, just those residents that are outside of our, outside of five miles from a fire station.
Okay.
Which all of this currently is, but yeah.
All right, I got some, I got some questions, we talked about, uh, when we met, police coverage and responding to that area. Now, you had indicated that there would be a gated community and that possibly that there would be private security there, is that still the plan?
I think that's under consideration for sure, it's going to be gated, and the, the gates will be manned with personnel, uh, what type of security, I don't know that I'm qualified to answer that, but somebody will be manning that and tracking who's coming in and out of the development, making sure they're supposed to be there, um, you know, whether it's deliveries or things like that, so yes.
Because my, my concern is still, like, if you have a domestic violence in there, you're going to send two officers at minimum, so we're going to pull two officers outside of the core of the city to commute out there, uh, which Fire Chief's already established it's at least beyond five miles from any of our fire stations, so we've got that concern. The fire concern, I still have the same concerns, and I'm hearing three to five years on the station, um, I don't think there's anybody at this table that can guarantee three to five years, uh, we're going to have to go through a budget process, and I, we'll just, just see how much money's left over after the budget process to pay for, what's, maybe an eight million dollar station, plus the, the millions of dollars annually to staff that, plus millions of dollars for the apparatus, the turnout, the equipment, everything else to go into that, so I don't know about what the timeframe on that might be. Also brought up the depreciation on the sewer system, and I ask, I asked for some numbers on that, and just for starters, the depreciation on the force main, day one, once it's turned over to the city, that's a $51,438 annual hit to the utility fund for us, just for the distance, um, I don't know, do, do you have any indications on the amount of linear footage on the gravity lines that you're going to be installing inside the community?
I don't have those numbers at my disposal, uh, right the second.
Ballpark?
Well, what was, how many feet of road did we have? Yeah, so I mean, it's.
44,000 of road? That's probably going to be close to the linear footage of your sewer system?
One could assume that.
Okay. Well, I base my numbers off Kelsey Glen, which is 12,000 linear feet, and the depreciation on the gravity is another 45,000, so we're getting close to 100,000 right off the bat just in depreciation once it's built in, plus you've got Metro, um, but it's going to cost us to process this and everything, I guess my point is, it's time we depreciate all of this, we collect this, pay for Metro on this, um, I have good reason to believe that this neighborhood's going to operate in a deficit to our public utility off the cost based on depreciation.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, you know, it was brought up the, the private streets there, that's a, that's a cost that the city doesn't have to.
Excuse me, sir, uh, let me get your mic on if you want to ask the question.
I, I know where you're going with this, but you, you're not, you're not looking at the whole, you, you're, you're looking at one aspect of it, but you're not looking at the amount of money that's going to save the city and not having to maintain these roads.
I.
And the sidewalks, how much is that, can we get a, can we get a number from Public Works, how much it costs us to, to repave and.
I, I did, Commissioner, I did consider that, and for me, that was, that was the entry level for me, even considering the neighborhood, because of the number of homes, the number of streets, uh, I have no doubt that that would have operated at a huge deficit. If they were public streets, yes, that was, that was what, and I, and I pushed for private streets and private roads the whole time on that, for that very reason, because I know that would have operated, has put us definitely at a deficit on that, but this is coming out of a separate pot of money, which is the utility district, and any taxes that we collect off this, we cannot put back into the sewer system, so what I'm as, what I'm asking the question is, if a neighborhood operates at a deficit on the sewer, where else do you make up the funds for a sewer deficit? And the only conclusion I could draw would be the other customers inside the city. It's, can we take money from, I'll ask our attorney, can we take money from any other sources to put into the sewer so, sewer fund? It's an enterprise.
No, that's a completely separate enterprise fund.
Anyone else want the floor? Are we ready to vote? Commissioner Heffner?
Uh, I, I'd like to see these, this data by the second reading, I, I'd like to see all these costs, depreciation, I need to understand a little bit more about that. I understand we're rattling off numbers, but I want, I want to get some, I want to get some backup, I'm going to see it, so somebody from Public Works, you can provide that to me.
Mr. Forkum, do you, uh, would you like to comment on that?
We need to see the plans that they have that shows the linear footage.
Can you work up the numbers of what we're?
They would have to provide us with documentation of what their plans are.
And I'd like to see it.
Because what's, what's going to take place is, we're going to need to know the depths, which, uh, you know, is a different cost, you know, how deep the manholes are going to be.
It's going to go under gas lines?
Yeah, going under the gas lines, I haven't heard any measurements on that yet.
So we don't really know? If we don't have measurement?
We don't know because I don't know what they know.
So, so how are we coming up with numbers if we don't even know?
We, we were basing this off Kelsey Glen, just by the size of the home.
Kelsey Glen is a, okay.
Yes.
Taps, number of taps that they're requesting.
Okay, Kelsey Glen is 12,000 linear feet.
I, I'd like to see some data.
They'll, they'll have to provide us.
We're, we're happy to provide that data.
And I'd like to see it based on the phases, year by year, uh, based on the build-out of the, the community, so phase one, 60 homes, I'd like to see that, phase two, phase three, et cetera, et cetera, based on their timeline. Okay? And then what our true costs are, our depreciation expenses are, based on that timeline, when they anticipate building this out.
We ready to vote? All in favor of a lev, excuse me, 13I and 13J, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Uh, this passes on first reading, uh, guys, you'll be back for second reading at the first meeting in June.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, without objection, I, I recommend a recess for about 15 minutes. Hearing none, we are recessed for 15 minutes, we will reconvene at 8:50.
Yeah, just, I, I want to see facts, not just.
And the.
Facts.
I will call the Board of Commissioners back to order. Our next item on the agenda is 13K, an ordinance to amend Part B of the Unified Development Code of the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, known as the Zoning Regulations, Ordinance 2001-29, adopted October 8, 2001, as amended by amending Section 5, 1044, development standards for single-family residential to include a requirement for streetlights in single-family residential subdivisions.
Motion.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. 13K is on the floor. Commissioner Giles, this is under your sponsorship. You have the floor.
So, not just because this was an item that a lot of people talked to me about while I was on the campaign trail. It is, it is truly needed in our subdivisions because of safety. This, this is something that we should have had in there before, in my opinion. Anytime you go walk, anytime you drive through, it, it would, it would give lighting. The Police Department is, is definitely promoting of this. I've talked to the Fire Department as well, and they are. It's something that we need to pass for safety for our citizens. So, we, we went through it about three times in the, in the planning and come back with some stuff. And there was a question today about, it was a very, very good question that, that was asked me about how they would, they would have a meter, how, how this would be, be measured. And on the, I think NES, I've got some information. I've not had a chance to look at it yet, but I think both NES and Middle Tennessee Electric, is that correct, Jill? Has said that they would be like one type of box, you know, like, what's it called?
Johnson, what is that box called?
The meter box, I did not hear back from NES today. I did get the response back from Mr. Hessen with Middle Tennessee, but they do have the one centralized meter box that all streetlights.
That's what I was trying to think. Yeah, yeah. And then the people who put gas in there, that's apparently, I found out that that goes normally, each one of those goes to the actual residence there. And that, so that's how they meter that, there, it's already on their meter. So.
Commissioner Heffner?
I know this is a typo, or cut and paste, I don't know. Hello? In the whereas, it states, City of Mount Juliet desires to include a requirement for playground equipment? No, but it's.
Wait, it's staff report.
Okay. It's a typo. We're bringing that another time.
I know, but it's only showing on staff report, correct? Or is it on the ordinance?
It's in the ordinance. It's a typo. It wasn't changed.
Which number was it? Oh, you're saying the, I'm sorry, you're in the whereas, but it's actually in the ordinance in the staff report. Like 19 was adopted and this was 20 on the staff report, so.
I mean, this is the ordinance, correct?
Correct, you're right.
So, we just need to update the whereas, the first two. That's all.
We need them.
No, and the, and the fourth.
We need to change it for playground, street.
Yes. Okay, I understand what you're saying. I'm sorry, I didn't realize, I thought you, I thought they had the verbiage somewhere in here.
No, no, it's just a.
Because that's not, yeah, that's not here yet. We're still working on it.
We need to amend this?
Since it's in ordinance? I think it's just a typo. We don't need to make an amendment. Do you think we need an amendment, Sam? Since the heading says streetlighting.
Is there any objection to changing the whereas to say streetlight? Hearing none.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. I support. Support the lights.
Can we include that to include every place that it? I see it in the 1, 2, 3, 4th, whereas also.
Without objection?
Now, therefore, be it ordained.
Well, it was also in the Planning Commission printouts, but.
That's staff report there.
Right, so we don't have to change that, do we? I mean.
We'll go through and clean it up. As the mayor said.
Well, maybe just blame it on that auto save feature in Word.
Okay. Please do. I want to thank John and Jill, John Buckman and Jill Johnson, for such diligent work that they've done on this and what they've been doing dealing with the playground too. I really appreciate them and what they've been doing. Because everything that I'm trying to bring on this and that next thing that will be coming down the road is for the safety and the welfare, obviously, of our citizens and our children that will be coming. So, I appreciate them.
Commissioner, I'm going to support this, but in perfect world of mine, anytime we put a requirement on somebody, we'd be looking for something to repeal too. That's just my thoughts.
Of course, this is new construction.
Yeah. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Heffner?
Just one quick comment. This could be, this could actually be addressed during the PUD process too, correct?
Well, I'm sure it would be for compliance, and, and if there was any kind of variance that would come up, you know, because, because.
Right.
In, in, in the real world, I mean, you can put this down every 300 feet, et cetera, but there might be something that, that you couldn't, you know, and you would have to bring that up. That would be brought up in, it would be in planning, and it would be for the PUD.
But you could, but you could put the, this, the same.
Language in there.
Language on a PUD.
I'm sure you probably could. But if we already have it in the ordinance, they're going to have to comply with it, just like they do sidewalks and things like that. And so, the variance would have to be to not comply to it.
You have questions and comments? All in favor of 13K, please signify with a "aye." Any opposed? Any abstentions? 13K. Be back for a second reading. 13M, a resolution approving agreement between the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, and Impact Pyro Incorporated for a 4th July fireworks show and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. A motion. At a second. Questions or comments on 13M? Commissioner Giles?
So, two things that were just, I think we all got an email, and I'm, I'm not understanding that, so I'm going to look at whatever the reply is that comes, comes with that from different people. But on, on the, on number 15, Sam, it says certificate of insurance, and it says it's attached, but I don't, I don't see one attached. I wanted to see that. It also states up in, in 12 that workers' compensation shall be provided for, for, for its employees only. And, and I understand that, and that, that's a, that's, that's a state, and we can't be named as an additional insured on that, and I'm sure we're, we never are, because that, that's state statute, that's limits. And they can have different limits, but, but they do need, have to carry, and we do need proof. But I don't see a certificate of insurance attached here, and so when I don't see the certificate of insurance attached, and I didn't catch that until tonight, actually, I mean, either up here, are we requiring them to have a minimum of $1 million liability?
That is generally what we require for.
I thought we do, but are we? Are we, are we looking, are we, are we getting these certificates on insurance, and we've got them on file here from these?
Well, that doesn't come through my office, the certificate of insurance, so I, I can't specifically speak to that, but generally, yes, they would have to provide.
Who's office does it come through?
Mr. Martin?
Great question, Commissioner. I think that's an excellent question. Absolutely, it does, and we get it before, I think, before they send the first payment so that they can order fireworks to get that certificate in hand through the Parks Department. And we do that, I guess.
And, and we are named as an additional insured?
Yes.
And do you know if the limits are nothing less than $1 million? Nothing less, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That answers that.
You have questions or comments? All in favor of 13M, please signify with a "aye." Any opposed, any abstentions? Opposed? Oh, yay.
Nay.
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 That's all right.
Like a horse, nay. Like we teach our grandkids.
13O, a resolution amending Resolution 75, 2022, to further explain the responsibilities of the Board of Commissioners? Motion. At a second. Commissioner Heffner, this is under your sponsorship. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. This shouldn't take too long. So, there's, I was, I was looking this up, we passed this back in 2022, November 14th. I was reviewing this, and I, and I noticed in the, in the second whereas, it refers to this body as the county commissioners. So, I don't think we meant to put county in there. So, just some house cleaning, cleaning items should be changed to city. And then also further go on to explain, to expand on what the, what the intention is of this resolution. So, the now therefore be it resolved, so unless otherwise provided in the city code, neither the commission nor any of its members acting in their capacity as a commissioner shall attempt to supersede the city manager's powers and duties. Such actions include, but are not limited to the following. Number one, shall not give orders to any department heads, employee, or staff, either publicly or privately. Number two, shall not direct all proposed tasks, projects, assignments, undertakings, or the like to the city manager and/or discuss at an open meeting, allowing the commission to provide input and direction. Number three, shall direct all matters and issues related to daily operations, department operations, and personnel to the city manager and not staff. Number four, shall not attempt to unethically influence or coerce city staff concerning either their actions or recommendations to the commission about personnel purchasing, awarding contracts, selection of consultants, processing or development applications, or the granting of city licenses. So, again, just expanding on that definition, because the previous one was a little, was a little vague. So, one last thing, I just, I want to make, make this publicly known that, you know, Kenny Martin has a job to run the city, and he runs an organization, and as an organization, we're a service-related company. We, we provide services to our customers. Our customers are the citizens of Mount Juliet, the, their visitors that come and, and visit Mount Juliet, anyone that's doing business in the city of Mount Juliet, and anyone that's, whether that's a retail store, or somebody that's building something. They're all customers. They all interface and interact with the employees of the city of Mount Juliet. I commend Kenny Martin on the job that he's done. I think we have opportunities going forward to, in fairness to Kenny, we, we need to give him goals. We need to give him goals every year, and I don't think we've ever done that as a board. I haven't sat on this, I've been on here five years, at least in the five years I've been here. We need to give Kenny some, some, some direction. I feel like sometimes he's a man without a rudder, and we need to be, this body needs to be that, that rudder for him. Give him some goals, and then measure those performances. Ultimately, all of that is going to roll downhill, is going to roll down to his organization. And I always said that disappointment in an individual's, I guess, success or not success, disappointment is a direct result of missed expectations. And if we're disappointed in Kenny, it's because we didn't set the right expectations. So, as a board, we need to set the expectations for Kenny, so we can then measure against it to see whether or not he is doing a good job, which I believe he is doing a fantastic job. So, I put all my faith in Kenny. He runs his organization, is about as good as any of I've been involved with, any company or organization. But I do believe that we need to give, you know, we need to guide him in the direction that this body wants to, to measure, and, and review his performance on an annual basis. I don't think he's, I don't think he's ever been in, I don't think we've ever done a performance review on Kenny, because we've never set goals. And there was a question today about it was a very, very good question that that was asked me about how they would they would have a meter, how how this would be be measured. And on the, I think NES, I've got some information. I've not had a chance to look at it yet. But I think both NES and Middle Tennessee Electric, is that correct, Jill? Has said that they would be like one type of box, you know, like, what's it called?
Johnson, what is that box called?
The meter box I did not hear back from NES today. I did get the response back from Mr. Heson with Middle Tennessee, but they do have the one centralized meter box that all streetlights.
That's what I was trying to think. Yeah, yeah. And then the people who put gas in there, that's apparently I found out that that goes normally. Each one of those goes to the actual residence there. And that so that's how they meter that there. It's already on their meter. So.
Commissioner Heffner?
I know this is a typo or cut and paste. I don't know. In the hello, in the whereas it states, city of Mount Juliet desires to include a requirement for playground equipment?
No, we don't own that.
No, but it's.
Wait, it's staff report. That's only showing on staff report, correct? Or is it on the ordinance?
It's a typo. It wasn't changed.
Which number was it? Oh, you're saying the I'm sorry, you're in the whereas. But it's actually in the ordinance in the staff report. Like nineteen was adopted and this was twenty on the staff report. So.
I mean, this is the ordinance, correct?
Correct. You're right.
So we just need to update the whereas the first two. That's all. No, and the and the fourth.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. I'm sorry. I didn't realize I thought you I thought they had the verbiage somewhere in here.
No, no, it's just.
That's not. Yeah, that's not here yet.
Sheila, do we need to amend this since it's in ordinance?
I think it's just a typo. We don't need to make an amendment. Do you think we need an amendment, Sam? Since the head says street lighting.
Is there any objection to changing the whereas to say streetlight? Hearing none.
Okay, sorry. I support. Support the lights.
Can we include that to include every place that it? I see it in the one, two, three, fourth, whereas also.
Without objection.
Now, third, four, well, be it ordained.
Well, it was also in the planning commission printouts, but.
That's staff report there.
Right. So we don't have to change that, do we? I mean.
We'll go through and clean it up. As the mayor said.
Well, maybe just blame it on that auto save feature in Word. Please do.
John and Jill, John Buckman and Jill Johnson, for such diligent work that they've done on this and what they've been doing dealing with the playground too. I really appreciate them and what they've been doing. Because everything that I'm trying to bring on this and that next thing that will be coming down the road is for the safety and the welfare, obviously, of our citizens and our children that will be coming. So I appreciate them.
Commissioner, I'm going to support this, but in perfect world of mine, anytime we put a requirement on somebody, we'd be looking for something to repeal too. Just my thoughts.
Of course, this is new construction.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Heffner?
Just one quick comment. This could be this could actually be addressed during the PUD process too, correct?
Well, I'm sure it would be for compliance. And and if there was any kind of variance, that would come up, you know, because because.
Right.
In 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 the real world, I mean, you can put this down every three hundred feet, et cetera. But there might be something that that you couldn't, you know, and you would have to bring that up. That will be brought up in it would be in planning and it would be for the PUD.
But you could but you could put the this the same.
Language in there.
Language on a PUD.
I'm sure you probably could. But if we already have it in the ordinance, they're going to have to comply with it, just like they do sidewalks and things like that. And so the variants would have to be to not come into it.
You have questions and comments? All in favor of thirteen K, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thirteen K. Be back for a second reading. Thirteen M, a resolution approving agreement between the city of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, and Impact Pyro Incorporated for a Fourth July fireworks show and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. A motion and a second. Questions or comments on thirteen M? Mr. Giles?
So two things that were just, I think we all got an email and I'm not understanding that. So I'm going to look at whatever the reply is that comes comes with that from different people. But on on the on number fifteen, Sam, it says certificate of insurance and it says it's attached, but I don't I don't see one attached. I wanted to see that. It also states up in in twelve that workers' compensation shall be provided for 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 its employees only. And and I understand that and that that's a that's that's a state. And we can't be named as an additional insured on that. And I'm sure we're we never are because that that's state statute, that's limits. And they can have different limits, but but they do need have to carry them. We do need proof. But I don't see a certificate of insurance attached here. And so when I don't see the certificate of insurance attached, and I didn't catch that until tonight, actually, I mean, either up here. Are we requiring them to have a minimum of a million dollars liability?
That is generally what we require.
I thought we do, but are we? Are we? Are we looking? Are we gain? Are we getting these certificates on insurance? And we've got them on file here from these.
That doesn't come through my office, the certificate of insurance, so I can't specifically speak to that. But generally, yes, they would have to provide.
Who's office does it come through?
Mr. Martin?
Great question, Commissioner. I think that's an excellent question. Absolutely, it does. And we get it before, I think, before they send the first payment so that they can order fireworks to get that certificate in hand through the Parks Department. And we do that, I guess.
And and we are named as an additional insured.
Yes.
And do you know if the limits are nothing less than a million dollars? Nothing less. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That answers that.
Yeah, questions or comments? All in favor of thirteen M, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Oh, yay.
Nay.
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 Sorry.
Horse. Nay.
Thirteen O, a resolution amending resolution seventy five, twenty twenty two, to further explain the responsibilities of the board of commissioners. Motion and a second. Commissioner Heffner, this is under your sponsorship. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. This shouldn't take too long. So there's. I was I was looking this up. We passed this back in twenty twenty two, November fourteenth. I was reviewing this and I noticed in the in the second whereas it refers to this body as the county commissioners. So I don't think we meant to put county in there. So just some house cleaning cleaning items. Should be changed to city. And then also further go on to explain, to expand on what the what the intention is of this resolution. So the now therefore be it resolved. So unless otherwise provided in the city code, neither the commission nor any of its members acting in their capacity as a commissioner shall attempt to supersede the city manager's powers and duties. Such actions include, but are not limited to the following. Number one, shall not give orders to any department heads, employee or staff, either publicly or privately. Number two, shall not direct all proposed tasks, projects, assignments, undertakings, or the like to the city manager and or discuss at an open meeting, allowing the commission to provide input and direction. Number three, shall direct all matters and issues related to daily operations, department operations and personnel to the city manager and not staff. Number four, shall not attempt to unethically influence or coerce city staff concerning either their actions or recommendations to the commission about personnel purchasing, awarding contracts, selection of consultants, processing or development applications, or the granting of city licenses. So again, just expanding on that definition. Because the previous one was a little was a little vague. So. One last thing, I just I want to make make this publicly known that, you know, Kenny Martin has a job to run the city. And he runs an organization and as an organization, we're a service-related company. We we provide services to our customers. Our customers are the citizens of Mount Juliet. The their visitors that come and and visit Mount Juliet. Anyone that's doing business in the city of Mount Juliet and anyone that's, whether that's a retail store or somebody that's building something, they're all customers. They all interface and interact with the employees of the city of Mount Juliet. I commend Kenny Martin on the job that he's done. I think we have opportunities going forward to, in fairness to Kenny, we we need to give him goals. We need to give him goals every year, and I don't think we've ever done that as a board. I haven't sat on this. I've been on here five years, at least in the five years I've been here. We need to give Kenny some 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 direction. I feel like sometimes he's a man without a rudder. And we need to be this body needs to be that that rudder for him. Give him some goals and then measure those performances. Ultimately, all of that is going to roll downhill. It's going to roll down to his organization. And I always said that disappointment in an individual's, I guess, success or not success, disappointment is a direct result of missed expectations. And if we're disappointed in Kenny, it's because we didn't set the right expectations. So as a board, we need to set the expectations for Kenny. So we can then measure against it to see whether or not he is doing a good job, which I believe he is doing a fantastic job. So I put all my faith in Kenny. He runs his organization. It's about as good as any of I've been involved with, any company or organization. But I do believe that we need to give, you know, we need to guide him in the direction that this body wants to to measure and and review his performance on an annual basis. I don't think he's I don't think he's ever been in. I don't think we've ever done a performance review on Kenny because we've never set goals. So and then the rest of it is just let Kenny do his job. Let Kenny do his job. We we shouldn't. And this goes for all the commissions. This goes for the planning. It goes for all the boards. We we shouldn't be telling employees what to do. We shouldn't be. It it acts confusion and it undermines our city manager when we're or anybody is meeting with staff and directing them to do things. That's that's not our job as a commission. We're here to pass ordinances, pass a budget and make sure the the city is is funded through that budget process. As far as running the city, it's that man's job right there. That's it. This is just clarification on on that.
Well, I'd say well said, Commissioner, on that one. I'll also out myself here on the fact that I'm the one who wrote seventy five, twenty twenty two and actually wrote in there, county commissioners. I also want to point out for the record, this was before I was ever involved with Chat GPT. So don't blame that either. I don't know what I was doing when I wrote that. But I appreciate the the clarification on that. It's a good catch. Just the way this is read written here, it says now therefore be it resolved, the board of commissioners, city of Mount Juliet, the first paragraph in section one and replacing the the first paragraph in under section one.
Replacing. This this is this is replacing this right here. Correct. Yes, correct.
I just wanted to point that the two paragraphs under section one, so we're placing the first paragraph under that. Mr. Martin, do you have anything to add?
I do. I want to say this publicly for for one thing. Thank each of you for wanting your confidence in me. It is a unique job to be in because if anybody knows the way that I'm wired, I'm wired a little bit HD. Needs OCT and all the complete alphabet, but I absolutely love this job. I love our team. For somebody that's been here a long time, I know I use that a lot. The reason I say it is I'm extremely proud of that. I never thought when I came here all those years ago that I would still be here and that I would be afforded such an awesome opportunity that's provided extremely well for me and my family. I'm blessed beyond belief. And I think the staff is 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 the best it's ever been. I absolutely wear them out with different things and probably unrealistic expectations, but we push, 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 and they always tend to step up. And I've said all along that the people we hire are wonderful human beings, and that's the most important thing. When I say that, I mean that sincerely. And anybody that knows me away from here knows that's how I am. So I'm thankful I don't take for granted anybody at this table in my elected body. My job is to protect you and make you look good and uplift you. And I there's nights I don't sleep if I feel like I've let you down. And I hate that I'm wired that way. But I am, and I want you to know you call me anytime for anything, I'll be here to help you. I hope that you have seen that. So I'm very thankful and blessed.
Commissioner Giles?
So when I read one of these lines, which this was passed, obviously, while I've been gone. You know, because of the committees that some of us are on, and I brought this, I asked Kenny about this today. So I want to bring this to your attention and make sure that that this isn't going against what you read, Commissioner Heffner. From time to time, and I'll give you an example, like today, I called Chief Mullins. But then I realized that I could call Jay Justin to see if Justin was still here and could he bring the the flyers to Rotary and and because Kenny had I had called him because I couldn't get, you know, it was one of those things to ask Emily. So from time to time, we need to ask, but I ask. I don't demand. I ask, could you do that? And if somebody can't, that's fine. I'll go to somebody else, you know, or go to you. But I'm not trying to go behind Kenny to do anything, but but those things just like happened today. And I won't. I gave Kenny that example. I didn't do that. That's the way that I operate on that or or something like that. So there's, I don't think that includes that kind of of interaction and and request. I know where you're coming from. So I just want to make sure everybody realizes that we can still talk to to city staff about stuff and and ask for stuff whenever they can get it or if they could do it then, if they couldn't. Is is everybody on board? Is that correct? Is it all of that? Okay. Okay. All right.
Commissioner Merlin?
Yeah, because another I send Sheila and Emily lots of them. I would say lots of emails asking for, you know, copies of ordinances, resolutions, whatever. So I mean, that's okay. I don't have to go through Kenny. Okay, so this is just a general question. And again, I don't know anybody that loves Mount Juliet any more than Kenny. But so this is just a general question, has nothing to do with Kenny, just the position itself, city manager. If there's a employee that feels they are being treated unfairly, own up the ladder and nothing's been done about it, according to this, they they take it up with the city manager, right? And so if if it's a problem with that position, they go to personnel, HR. But if you're if the position is their boss, the the employee might feel like they have nothing. So what is the recourse in a general question for an employee in that situation? What what is the process? I mean, what what could they do? I mean, in a in a situation like that?
Yes, ma'am.
Our personnel manual lays out the process for which if there's grievances or anything like that, what employees can do.
Yes, sir.
It's really done to protect the commission. And that's an excellent question, by the way, is because just say that somebody wasn't happy with the decision I made after they went to their supervisor or through the chain of command, say, for example, it's a patrolman, they go to the corporal and they went to chain of command. And she said, buck stops here, that's the end of it. They could still come to HR and to legal and myself and say, hey, I don't I don't agree with this. We're going to thoroughly look at it and either back the chief or the department head or not. And sometimes you just have situations where an employee, no matter what you do, they're just not going to be happy. And they then will, of course, come to an elected official, which puts you all in a really bad spot. So a lot of times I just encourage the commissioners to say, have you talked to the city manager? Yes, but I just wasn't happy about the outcome. Then any commissioner can always call me and I'll explain to you what we did to get the decision we did. And that way you're hearing both sides of the story. Because I think a lot of times people will reach out to you and put you in really bad positions that you don't deserve to be in.
Well, I'll say if somehow find out, if you call me jumping the chain of command, you'll wind up on a three-way call with me and Kenny at the same time. Commissioner Heffner?
Now, I'll say this publicly. I mean, I will always, my door is always open. Always. My phone always answered. I may not act on it. I may pull in Kenny and have a conversation, but my door is always my door is always open to anybody that works for the city. The question is, am I acting on it in a with with Kenny in cooperation with our city manager? Or am I doing something else? It's something else that I but. So that I'll always have that open door policy for anybody that wants to have a conversation. I'll always lend in here.
All right. All in favor of thirteen O, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That does pass. Without objection, we'll take thirteen C from the tape back up consideration. Commissioner Giles, you were in the process of making a motion before we run into my inability to.
Yeah. Record all of that. Mine was, but I know I've got it on my phone. Sheila's got it. So what do we need to do at this point? Reread it or?
Just need to, if you could just read that or if you want to read it.
Okay. I don't remember exactly where it was in the ordinance. But number F, existing speed control devices on roads that are resurfaced shall be placed by city staff with comparable speed control devices that produce the same or greater results without the traffic commission's consideration or approval. And then add to B one. If the eighty fifth percentile speed is less than eight miles over the posted speed limit, the public works director may allow a request for speed control devices to go forward to the traffic commission for consideration. Comma, only if there is inadequate intersection sight distance or stop in sight distance that poses a safety issue. An intersection sight distance or stopping sight distance analysis must be performed to document that the available available sight distance is less than the required sight distance by the A A S H T O standards.
There was there was some help writing it. You think I could write that? Okay.
I couldn't even write it down as you dictated it, but that's your motion, Commissioner.
Yeah, but I want to.
I've got a second.
Okay. So and Sheila, you did put in there that produced the same or greater results without, right?
Yes, I think I read that.
I didn't hear.
It's under F.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's a whole new section. The other one goes under add to B one.
Right.
Right. It's the same thing. It's in there. It is. I didn't write. Thank you.
But is in there now?
No, that's adding to because they they took out the minor collector roads.
F saying you put them back without going to the traffic commission, basically?
Right, because they're already there and there's proven results. So if they're deterioration, they have to put it back and or they have to, you know, resurface the roads. It goes back because we've got stats that prove it has it has done it. Now, some of them could be at 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 their discretion, could be different as long as they produce the same thing, you know, whether it's staggered or whatever. So. You know, and that's down the road. Hopefully, we won't have any of that deteriorates or we resurface those anytime soon.
That's following the same or greater results.
Yeah.
All right. So a portion in there said that public works, if if the eighty fifth percentile was under eight miles an hour over, that the public works could at his discretion, take it to the traffic commission to be considered, right?
That's correct. With with surveys and stuff like sight distance surveys and things like that, they just wouldn't go and say, hey, it's my opinion. They would have some kind of results to show why that's their opinion.
All right. Well, if that's the case, wouldn't that last line of number one need to come out where it says speed calming devices will not be considered by traffic commission for the eighty fifth percentile speeds less than eight miles an hour?
I think I think what he's writing is an exception to that in there, not just to remove it. Because he's he's saying the general rule is is they won't be considered if they're not at least eight miles over, except in these special circumstances where there's sight distance considerations. Then by the public works director's discretion, it could go to the planning commission. But only if it's met those criteria.
Okay. And can I assume that Matt helped write that? Okay.
Any questions or comments on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our back on thirteen C is once amended. Kind of like a kind of like to amend this to say every traffic calming device doesn't have to be a speed hog, but I won't. They are other options. Just want to throw that out there.
Yes, exactly.
They are roundabouts. There's there's.
Flashing lights.
Calming devices. There's painting to make the lines smaller. To create the perception. There's a number of things that you can consider without beating my back to death. But. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of thirteen C is once amended, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thirteen C is passed. Last item on the agenda is we have an appointment. And this is for the second position for the central business development improvement district, C bid. This appointment, I had a lady reach out to me. She's got a long history of service. I believe she serves with you on the homeowners association there, Grills, Ms. Melna Van Bieber. She submitted her name forward. I'd put that forward for consideration by the commission. All in favor of appointing her to the second position for the central business improvement districts, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And she is appointed. And at this point, by my account, we are at item number fifteen, which is adjournment. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're adjourned.